Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Call the meeting to order for the January 24, 2017, a regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Public comments and agenda, non-agenda items, please come forward.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the Newport Beach City Council, my name is Jim Mosher. I just wanted to say I was very pleased in looking at the tentative agendas that were distributed in the lobby outside to see that the two council meetings in February are going to both have study sessions at them. And the reason I'm saying that is the structure we have tonight of going into a closed session with no study session before the council meeting used to be a very rare occurrence. Yet since September 13th of last year, the city council has held a single study session on a single topic. That seemed to me to be a very long, dry spell, and a surprising one because I don't think it was for a lack of public issues that could merit a public discussion and debate. So I just wanted to say I'm pleased by that, and I hope that study sessions will return as a regular feature of the council meetings in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Any other public comments? Seeing none.
I have a closed session announcement. The city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss items 3A and B, including meeting with legal counsel, discuss the possible initiation of litigation in regards to one matter, and a conference with labor negotiators, city manager Dave Kiff, Assistant City Manager Carol Jacobs, and the Human Resources Director Barbara Salvini regarding negotiations with all represent employees. Thank you.
Thank you. We are recess until the 7:00 regular meeting. Actually Duffy, this is yours, man. This one's brand new. The regular meeting of Newport Beach City Council. Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Closed has to report this. There's no report, Mayor Muldoon.
Thank you. We have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Will O'Neil.
Please place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're honored to have an invocation by Rabbi Young.
When I accepted the honor of leading this wonderful city in prayer, I was sent a list of rules, and among them was that I cannot quote from Scripture. So I will instead describe Eugenia Nesco's Rhinoceros, a play in which a rhino charges down the street in a small French town on a Sunday afternoon. People are frightened and outraged. Soon another rhinoceros barrels down the street, and people are startled but begin to argue whether the second rhino was the first one making another pass, or whether it was an African or an Asian rhino. Banality reigns. As rhino appearances increase, people in the town begin themselves to metamorphize into rhinos. Eventually, virtually, everyone becomes a rhinoceros. Nesco's allegory asks how horrifying ideas become normal, and explores how easy it is for humans to become brash, charging, violent individuals instead of maintaining the important, civil, peaceful discourse of successful forward movement in society. That is why we are here, to keep from becoming rhinos and to continue to work together to improve our city, our community, our lives. And so we pray. We are assembled in the fellowship of humanity to reaffirm our Creator's eternal truth that cooperation and concord are the basis of social order, and that through the devotion to the cause of humanity, we realize the purpose of divinity. We humbly ask that God teach us to live in harmony with our neighbors and thus prove that we are united as God's children. Teach us to labor in patience and injustice. May our generosity toward our neighbor and their forbearance toward us teach us the true meaning of God's loving kindness. May our efforts to bring about unity clarify our vision and give fuller meaning to the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts. May we remember that as faith in God leads us to peace, so too peace and concord leave us to God. Amen.
Thank you.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements.
Thank you. And while I still have the rabbi potentially in the room, this is a time when city council announcements are made and items are placed on future agendas. And I would like to place for discussion amending our prayer and invocation policy. I believe it is somewhat dated, non-conformity with constitutional law, and if Rabbi wants to come and quote Scripture, he should have the right to. Councilman O'Neil.
Yes, thank you. Very briefly, I hope everyone has been taking advantage of Restaurant Week. My wife and I used it for date night and a few lunches out. So if you haven't gone, please go to dinenb.com and find some great menus. Newport Harbor High School spoke to the principal, Sean Bolden. He wanted me to let you know that they have their spring musical coming up in April. It's gonna be Legally Blonde. So our lawyer, lawyer mayor Kevin Muldoon, I'm sure will be there. April 21st to the 23rd, April 28th to April 30th, all shows will start at 7:00 PM. On Saturday, there's a matinee. They'll also have their Hall of Fame ceremony, May 25th at 6:00 PM. And then in September, if you can believe he's asking me to go that far out, official reopening of the Davidson Field, which I think a lot of folks are looking forward to, September 18th, or excuse me, September 8th. Sage Hill School nearing completion of its aquatic center, April 18th is its grand opening. I was fortunate to go look at the crime stats meeting. I've been assured that they're going to make sure District 7 is crime-free. Right, Chief?
Cars!
And then I enjoyed going to the Speak Up Newport event, listening to Aaron Harp and Chief Lewis speak about Prop 64, which is our marijuana legalization proposition. So please go check out these events going forward basis. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Piattar. Mrs. Dixon.
Yes, I want to share where I was part of the afternoon, enjoyed the official opening of the Balboa Village Gateway Sign. And I just want to extend a number of thank yous to the community. It takes a village, as I said this afternoon. The Balboa Village Advisory Committee, that's been in existence for four, five years, that carried forward the Balboa Village Master Plan, I think that was created in 1999 or 2000. So the desire for this sign goes back about 15 years. Also want to give thanks and appreciation to the Balboa Village Merchants Association because this was community-driven, resident and business community-driven, the merchants and the residents. I want to give a special call-out to special citizen Ralph Rothheim, whose original idea to focus on the fun zone, the kind of the heart and soul of Balboa Village, is what has been manifested in this sign. The design was community-driven, resident-business-driven, and it wasn't just a sign, just to put a sign up there. It has a functional purpose, I should mention, because so many people, I hear this all the time, "Am I on Balboa Island, or how do I get to Balboa?", and make this distinction of Balboa Village. And Balboa Village is going through a renaissance as we speak, and I'm so proud to update the community on the Discovery Cube, formerly known as Explore Ocean, is now Discovery Cube, part of the Discovery Museum in Santa Ana. Also, we closed escrow a couple of weeks ago on the Balboa Village Theater. Now it's in private hands, and will be serving the community as it gets refurbished and remodeled and reconstituted. And we're going to have the shuttle, the Balboa Village, Balboa Peninsula Shuttle, operating this summer on weekends on a trial basis. So there's been a tremendous amount of staff work through Public Works, Community Development, Community, Resident and Business Ownership. And the most important aspect of this, I should say, it was not a single penny of general fund dollars where it was used to construct and fabricate this sign. This was all funded through the visitors-serving parking meters of our visitors who visit our community in Balboa Village, and that those parking meter revenues is what paid for this sign. So I'm very proud of this. I think today at the celebration of the launch, the ribbon cutting, the community is very proud and grateful to staff that you have executed so finely. So thank you, Public Works and Community Development, for shepherding this through Kim Bran and Brenda. Thank you so much for all the work you've done over the years, working with the business groups and the residents. I appreciate it. So thank you. It was a great day. And that's it on my announcements, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
I've been busy. One of the first things I did was follow through on a project in Balboa Island that Councilman Ed Selig started a couple of years ago, and that was to get golf cart parking symbols painted in the street. And I'm very pleased to report that there's been no violations since they were painted. So Dave Webb, thank you and your department for following through on that so quickly. I, too, was at the ribbon-cutting ceremony today, and I just want to compliment Councilman Duffield on the excellent job he did on using those huge scissors to cut the ribbon. Very good job. We have today, just this evening, before the council meeting, I met with Dave Webb and Mark to begin discussion on the redesign of Marine Avenue on Balboa Island, looking at possible March date to bring people together and start talking about what that might look like. I attended the Balboa Island Merchants Association meeting last week, and also working with Dave Webb, we have a meeting scheduled that's gonna be an invitation-only meeting with people who will be most impacted by the redesign and/or the calming of traffic on Bayside Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
I was also at the Balboa Village Sign event today, and I'll have to say, early on when this project got rolling, I was somewhat skeptical. And sometimes I feel like there's a little too much placking and signage and various things going up. But this, as a former business owner and resident within about 150 feet of the sign and very familiar with the struggles that that area's had, I just think this is a very good thing, actually. It looks terrific, and I think the design really reflects sort of the image of the village and tying it in with the fun zone and all those things that we, many of us remember. So great job. I was really, really happy to see it, and it just looks terrific.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Duffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff asked me to talk about this real briefly, so I won't go into great extent on it, but they, that big, huge typo last year, they kept selling us on this event, the man, all of you guys, it was a big deal. And we were all prepared for it, but I'm just gonna tell you that they were just, it's a typo. They kept saying El Nino was last year, just so you know, it's this year.
El Nino. All right. Public comments on consent calendar?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 12. Public comments are invited on consent calendar for members of the audience. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Counsel, any items to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. O'Neil.
Item 10.
Thank you. Mr. Piattar.
I don't want to pull it, but item 12, I just want to note that planning commission meetings being videoed is something I support.
Thank you, as do I with the new revisions on staff parameters around planning commissioners. Mrs. Dixon.
Yes, thank you. Item number five, please.
Thank you, Mr. Hurdman.
I don't want to pull anything, but I do have to recuse myself from item number six because of a conflict of interest in real property within 500 feet of the bridge project.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
Item nine, please.
And Mayor Pro Tem Duffield, any items to pull?
I have none.
I have none as well.
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification on item 12, if you're gonna leave that on the consent calendar, I'd make a recommendation that Part B involving direction to staff, that the actual be changed to say direct staff to film planning commission meetings. And then I think Mr. Mosher identified a Scrivener's error in the old council policy, and I would propose that as an amendment to keep the spirit of the initial council policy and then make the amendment to it. There's also a resolution that's in your hard copy here that would complete that agenda item. Again, it can stay on consent if you'd accept those changes to the recommended action. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Duffield, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I'd like to move the balance of the consent calendar items, 1 through 12, with item 12 amended to incorporate a resolution amended by city council policy A13 with recusal on item number six from Councilmember Hurdman, with item number 10 continued by staff to amend some Part B to limit it to five years, and with items number five and number nine by Councilman Avery, and item number five also pulled by Councilwoman Dixon. And I don't know how to incorporate our city managers.
Councilmember O'Neil pulled item 10, not just continued, I believe?
I thought, well, I had it by, okay.
I would be fine continuing. That will be my motion, anyway.
Oh, your motion was?
My motion, my motion will be to table number 10, so you know what? Let's pull it.
I would like to have it be pulled, and we can discuss it.
Let's pull it. Number 10, please.
Okay, and then we're gonna pull item 10.
Thank you. Sir, second.
Mr. Duffield, if you just added that to reflect the city manager's comments on item 12, I think you're good.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you.
I second.
So incorporate it. I'll go second. Do we have any public comments on this?
Please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner, and I got a little confused about that, but I'm assuming and hoping that you are all going to be approving the videotaping of the planning commission. And I came here specifically tonight to thank Mayor Muldoon for bringing this back. I really appreciate that, and I hope you all will support the motion, the item. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and it is moved to be approved. Any other public comments?
Mayor Muldoon and members of the city council, my name is Jim Mosher, also commenting on item 12, the video recording and broadcasting of the planning commission meetings. I, too, strongly support that, and I thank the council for changing its mind and now approving the matter. And I think it's long overdue. I did want to correct a comment I submitted in writing about the proposed change to the policy A13, which is encouraging members of boards and commissions to avoid grandstanding and operating in a manner that would prejudice the rights of the parties coming before them in matters of appeal or that might be appealed to somebody else. In writing, I said I thought that that was a harmless provision but probably unnecessary because I had not seen the videotaping to cause any change in the behavior of the planning commission. However, in seeing it now in a resolution, I actually am changing my mind. I think it's a very good addition to the policy, and I think that it should be a behavior that is probably as implied here. It's expected at all times, not just when boards and commissions are being filmed. And it's a policy that I think should apply to the city council as well as to the other boards and commissions. The city of Newport Beach has been damaged in the past by decision-makers showing obvious bias, and I would like to remind the city council as well as the planning commission, one of the most obvious indications of that is at the end of a public hearing when one of the decision-makers reads their opinion from a written statement, which has happened a couple of times in the past. It creates in the public's impression and the people appearing before them that the public hearing had no consequence or effect on their decision, and that that's a behavior as well as grandstanding that should be avoided. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 3, ordinance number 2017-1, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach temporarily extending non-exclusive solid waste franchises from March 1st, 2017 to November 8th, 2017, to ensure adequate provision of solid waste collection services within the city of Newport Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Avery, Councilmember Dixon, and Councilmember Hurdman need to vote, please.
I voted. Does it shot? Push it again?
Yeah, push it one more. Are you thumbs up? Oh, there we go. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. So turning to the consent calendar, items are pulled. Item number five, staff.
Thank you very much, Mayor Muldoon. So we're gonna give a little bit of a history of the city attorney's office and what's being proposed as far as changes to the office structure. What we're proposing is to permanently downgrade two of the three assistant city attorney positions to deputy city attorney positions, add one deputy city attorney position, and then alter the responsibilities for the remaining assistant city attorney as well as the salary range. I thought it'd be good to give you a little bit of a history before we get into the proposal itself. When I became city attorney in 2011, the budget for the office, as far as the amount actually spent by the city attorney's office in fiscal year 2010 to 2011, was $2,724,000, and that's based on the audited statements. Since I became city attorney in 2011, we basically have had a reduction of about $800,000 per year. And you can see what the actual amounts spent are on the PowerPoint. Last year is 1.84 million approximately. In regards to personnel costs, the year before I became city attorney, our personnel costs were 1.6 million. We've been able to reduce that over time. The lowest year was fiscal year 2014-15, where it was 1.17 million, and last year, or actually for this budgeted year, it's 1.221 million. A lot of the cost savings that we were able to achieve was basically taking a look at our personnel. And so one of the things we did was reduce our personnel from 10.7 full-time equivalency, and we reached the low in 2014-15 fiscal year at 6.5, where we stayed for two years. And then last year, we added half a paralegal position, increasing our FTE to 7.0 total. One of the things we looked at when we've been basically looking at personnel is what's the purse cost associated with the personnel. We've had some people leave over the years. Most of the people that we've, actually, all the people that we've hired have not been part of the purse system in the past, and so they're coming to the new Peppera formula, which reduced the cost, and that's added to the budget savings that we had as far as personnel. Net savings from 2011 to the present, basically assuming the $2.724 million budget would have gone forward at that same amount, is $3,673,000. And basically what I did is I calculated, you know, to 2.7 million over the same period of time, and then compared that to what we've actually spent. And then in regards to personnel costs, I did the same thing. I took a look at the $1,605,000 budget that was in place when I took over and deducted what we've actually spent, and the net difference is $1.83 million since I took over as city attorney. Current office structure has a city attorney and three assistant city attorneys. When I made a hiring decision to replace one of the other assistant city attorneys that left, I've underfielded that position with a deputy city attorney because I thought that he could perform the job, as well as there's significant reduction in cost associated with the assistant city attorneys compared to deputy city attorneys. The proposed office structure that I'm looking to go to is city attorney with one assistant city attorney, and then three deputy city attorneys. So it converts those two assistant city attorney positions to deputies, and basically I'm looking to add a deputy city attorney. So in comparison, as far as the number of approved personnel, in 2010-11 fiscal year, we were at 10.7. This year, we're at 7.0. I'm looking to increase the full-time equivalency to 8.0, which is still under where we were in 2010-2011. As far as possible fiscal impacts of the proposed change, it's always a little bit tricky to know exactly what the impact's going to be because it depends what you hire people in at, and there's different rates that apply depending on whether they're a step one, step two, up to step five. So for the immediate fiscal impact, I calculated it out at a step two, and the numbers there include benefits. And basically, in 2010-11, as far as our personnel cost, it was $1.6 million, and the impact to us in fiscal year 2016-17 and going forward would be $1,325,000. Now, that's an estimate because we've had some cost savings associated with the assistant city attorney who recently left, so it might be a little bit less of that, but that's basically factoring it out for the full year.
That's an initial cost, incremental cost of approximately $100,000.
It comes out to be just about $104,000. That's right. Possible future impacts associated with the change of the deputy city attorneys is $1,380,000. That's basically calculating out a deputy city attorney eventually at a step five, and that includes their benefits. So I took the difference in the salary and added another 26% on for benefits. So that's kind of the fully loaded rate there, which is still less than we were at fiscal year 2010-11. Now, why make the change? Well, the workload over the years has changed significantly. We're processing a few hundred misdemeanor complaints. When I came in, they were processing, you know, 10 to 12 a year. So we've had a significant increase in the number of misdemeanor complaints that we're filing on behalf of the city. We've also seen a large uptick over the last few years in Public Records Act requests. And with more services being contracted out, we see a larger volume of contracts that are coming into our office. A lot of this work is better handled by junior attorneys, and I think that's good because there's a cost savings associated with that, because they come in under the new purse formula, so you have less of a benefit burden with them, and then their salaries are a lot less, so they're not as expensive. And the other reason we're proposing to change the structure of the office is that most of the city departments, you know, first city manager's office and city clerk's office are all structured having one person as the head of the department and then a deputy who basically supports them. This would be the role of the assistant city attorney, who would take on more of a managerial function in the office and be available to handle, free him up as far as his time so that he can handle more. that he can handle more intense projects without being burdened with some of the less significant items that could be handled by junior deputies. So ultimately, while I've projected some numbers out there as far as what the net personnel cost would be, I expect that our budget would go down overall because right now we're sending some items out to outside council that don't need to be handled by outside council. They could be handled in-house if we had the capacity. Unfortunately, we haven't had the capacity given the volume of the work, so some things that could be handled in-house are being basically farmed out to outside council. So I expect to see a net savings related to being able to do more in-house. And then for the next fiscal year, for the 2017-18 budget, I reduced my outside council budget fairly significantly to reflect the fact that we're going to have increased personnel cost. So ultimately, our budget should say net neutral, and I'm not expecting there to be any net increase to the city by this proposed change. And I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Councilwoman Dixon.
Push the button. Thank you, Mr. Harp. Quick question on the second to last page. Just explain the salary range. Are you creating a new salary range for the Assistant City Attorney position?
Yes, so we're looking to create a new salary range for the Assistant City Attorney. So currently, the way it works is the Assistant City Attorneys are on, have steps, so there's one through five steps. So what I'm looking for is to create a range that in order to place the person within that range as appropriate. But I think that in doing so, there's no intent here to basically put them at the maximum range. You have to take into account what other city employees make. You have to look at what are the new functions that they're performing, and you have to look at what other city attorney's offices that are comparable, what are they paying similar individuals. So I haven't done the full analysis yet. There's no financial change associated with this proposal. It just establishes a range that the person could be placed on.
All right, just a couple other questions. First of all, I commend your past and present and future commitment to cost savings and cost efficiencies, and I commend how you've been managing the department in that regard. And I appreciate the realignment to transfer that deputy position, which is a higher salaried position to, no, the assistant position to the lower salaried deputy, yeah, deputy position. So I commend you. My one comment and, I guess, recommendation or request, because I personally have a high guard up for headcount additions. Mr. Kiff has done a fine job the last several years to reducing headcount, and I think that's a good track to follow. So I would ask if the two of you can work together to identify a position that would be allocated to your department so that that would be the headcount, so there would be no net headcount FTE addition to the total city employee base. Is that doable?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea as far as making sure that our overall headcount as a city doesn't increase. I don't know, I haven't spoken with Mr. Kiff of whether there's a position somewhere in the city that's going to be eliminated in the next round that's not going to be filled. But I'd be happy to not fill that Deputy City Attorney position if you chose to approve it until there was basically an offset, so the total headcount didn't go up. I don't think there's a position I could get rid of in my own department, but I think there probably may be one citywide, and I'd have to defer to Mr. Kiff on that.
Is that something, Mr. Kiff, that you two can work together on?
Of course.
Okay, good. All right, well, I thank you and look forward to that change.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
Outside council in the last five years, has that been?
Relatively linear in terms of prediction costs.
We have had some budget savings every year on outside council. It varies depending on the particular year and how many matters we have. So if I can go back a couple slides here, the total budget savings compared to my predecessors is 3.67 million. And 1.83 million of that is basically attributed to personnel. So the difference there is either overhead costs that we saved or outside council budget that wasn't expended. That's the difference between the two numbers. It falls into those categories.
So you're pretty comfortable with the budget next year and the following years in terms of handling this and keeping costs where you expect, just based on past?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil.
So if we moved adoption of the resolution with the caveat that the third Deputy City Attorney position not be filled pending vacancy, so that a FTE count for the full city not increase, would that be acceptable?
Yes, the workload does need another deputy in that position, and there is outside council costs associated with the fact that we don't have another person. But I think, you know, depending on how quickly, I don't know, you know, what other positions in the city are not being filled at the moment, but that's something I can understand that the council worked hard to basically keep the headcount down, so I'm amenable to that. I just would like it to be that once a position's identified, that I can go ahead and fill a position even if it's not in next budget year, if it's this budget year.
Mr. Mayor, I move passage of the resolution with the caveat that I just mentioned.
Second. Second. Before we go on to any other public discussion, Mr. Kiff, are you able, what would be the earliest date you could free up that second position that he's requesting?
Mr. Muldoon, it's a good question, and I'd need to talk with the HR Director and see. We're actually starting to formulate the budget right now for the proposed budget for the coming year. I think within about two months, we'll be closer to knowing what that might look like.
Excellent. So if the motion is passed as submitted, can we have a commitment from staff that this will be resolved by three months?
I think that's a fair guess. If that were a goal, that we would certainly work hard to achieve that, yes.
Thank you. Any other comments from the dais? Okay, let's open it up to the public before we vote.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I think I understood from the presentation that the early slide we showed about the total amount actually spent by the City Attorney's Office was including not only the in-house personnel but also the outside legal costs. But I assume this does not include the settlement costs that the city has to pay as a result of the success or failure of the legal work done by the City Attorney's Office. And although I appreciate that settlement costs are very volatile and not entirely within the control of the city, whether changing the structure has actually resulted in a net savings or not, I think can't really be understood without knowing whether the resulting team is more effective or not, whether those settlement costs are outweighing whatever the savings may be in personnel. So I think that's still an open question. Regarding the optimal structure for the City Attorney's Office, I wanted to remind you that our city charter is very vague about what the City Attorney's Office should look like. It actually speaks to the City Attorney at the end of his term, turning over his papers to the next City Attorney, which implies that at the time of the charter in 1954, it was imagined we would have a single outside City Attorney doing all the legal work, as I believe we did for a number of years. And the city has grown four or five times in population in the 60-some years since then. But I think it would be good to know what the City Attorney typical structure and costs are in other cities that are of similar size to ours, which I don't know from the staff report or the presentation. And then finally, regarding how the new City Attorney and Assistant City Attorney are going to work, the organization chart with one under another kind of doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. And I would point out that it can't be the entire organization chart of the City Attorney's Office, because we learned on the next slide, there's actually eight employees, and this only shows five, the ones who are attorneys. So there are other office help, paralegals and so forth. And so I would hope there's a better concept of how all eight employees work together and what the role is of the Assistant City Attorney as well as the City Attorney with respect to those other employees. An organization should have a good organization chart, and that's just part of one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, seen none, bring it back to the dais. I support this proposal. Mr. Harp, I think you're doing an excellent job of making it more efficient. Some of the work that you're talking about, insourcing is essentially busy work, like FOIA requests and filing misdemeanor cases. There is a correlation with insurance coverage, things you can't predict like lawsuits, and the caliber of the firm we use in litigation that I don't think you could quantify if you were even able to. You'd be doing a different job if you could. So, and I see Mr. O'Neil has a question or a comment.
Very briefly, I'll note as an outside litigator to private companies that the trend is to bring more people in-house as much as possible to scale back on outside council costs. So an FTE in this particular instance is not quite the same as an FTE in a different area of the city, so I'll call the question.
All right, let's vote. Thank you. Item 9, staff.
On item 9 here, we have a presentation from the Chairman of the Harbor Commission, Paul Blank, I believe wants to come up and address you on their objectives here. Paul, did you want the PowerPoint? Are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I am Paul Blank, and I'm currently the Chairman of the Harbor Commission. I have the true authors of the Harbor Commission's 2017 objectives with me. They are Commissioners Doug West and Skip Kenny. It's been a great pleasure working with these men to formulate our 2017 objectives. It will be a greater pleasure to work with the full commission on accomplishing these objectives. As you will have seen in the staff report, our mission breaks into two overarching responsibilities. The first is to ensure the long-term welfare of Newport Harbor for all residential, recreational, and commercial users. Our second overarching responsibility is to promote Newport Harbor as a preferred and welcoming destination for visitors and residents alike. Our current objectives are crafted directly to support one or the other of these responsibilities. The staff report lists the specifics of each objective, including the subcommittees assigned. I believe you can read them faster than I can enunciate them, so I'll leave it to you to do so. I would, however, like to point out that we considered many other objectives and pared the list down to this eight for two primary reasons. The first is, we wanted to focus on making real progress on these eight, the most important priorities at present, and not spread our efforts too thin. Number two, we expect you may hand us a few other matters to address as we go along, as evidenced at your meeting on January 11th, when you disbanded the Tydlands Management Committee and handed those responsibilities to us. Additionally, each Commissioner has selected a councilmember liaison. We do our best to keep you informed and seek your guidance on harbor-related matters, so surprises are kept to a minimum. Commissioner West has selected Councilman Avery. Commissioner McIntosh selected Mayor Pro Tem Duffield. Commissioner Gerling selected Mayor Muldoon. Commissioner Stapleton continues his liaison relationship with Councilwoman Dixon. Commissioner Kenny selected Councilman Hurdman. Councilman Piattar remains stuck with me as his liaison. Councilman O'Neil will have the soon-to-be-selected Commissioner as his liaison. If you're not hearing enough about the Harbor Commission, or you're not hearing enough from your liaison, please feel free to reach out to me directly. As a footnote, I'd like to make you aware that one of the objectives from last year that we declared complete has some follow-up still needed. That follow-up is to present the results and recommendations of our study on businesses and services required to maintain a vibrant harbor to the Planning Commission. You'll see on their February 9th agenda that I will present those recommendations. The message of the request comes down to, please be mindful of the need to have these businesses and services on or near our harbor when making planning or zoning decisions. Thanks for your interest in our harbor.
Thank you. We want to put you in the hot seat because it's fun, because you're a fun guy. Any questions from the council? Or comments?
Thoroughly enjoyed the tour before Christmas on the ferry. I especially enjoyed the fact that each of the Commissioners took a role in that. It was an excellent experience. Good job, Paul. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes, actually, I was going to say the same thing. I think that your annual tour of the harbor is time well-spent, and I appreciate it was well-organized. And just a reminder, councilmembers, Mayor Pro Tem Duffield and Councilmember Piattar and staff commissioned an economic report last year. What was, what is the economic value of the harbor to the city? Three, two point?
Millions.
Millions?
200 million.
200 million?
200 million.
That's fantastic. So you are annually, so you are responsible, you and your fellow Commissioners have an important charter to protect our harbors, and look forward to your continued good job in doing so. And thank you for reporting to the council. Not all Commissions, I know I brought this up a year ago, not all Commissions do it. Maybe it's not necessary, but I certainly appreciate how you, the Harbor Commission articulates its goals for the coming year, so thank you. And then reporting back to us on the successful completion of those goals, I think is a worthwhile effort, so thank you.
Former Harbor Commissioner Avery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment. It's a great time to be a Harbor Commissioner. We have two ex-Harbor Commissioners here, but I think even more importantly, I'm sure this council is more aware, more engaged, more supportive of the harbor than any other council ever in Newport Beach. And that's not to denigrate past councils, but I just think the awareness that the Harbor Commission has brought forward steadily over the years has really turned the tide, as they say, in terms of visibility minds on the harbor. And there's a big commitment here for sure to support the Harbor Commission and our greatest resource. So thank you. Thank you for your report.
You may recall that was an objective of ours four years ago, is to raise the awareness of the Harbor Commission and its relevance.
Well done.
Good job. Thank you, Mr. Blank. Thank you. Do you have any public comments on this item or the comments made by Mr. Blank? All right, seen none. I don't see any requests for discussion either. Do we have a motion?
I move.
I'll second.
I'll do it again. I vote twice.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Vote early, vote often.
All right, staff, item number 10, consent calendar.
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is an item, just, I know a couple of you pulled it, just to summarize for the public, that would authorize the Board of Library Trustees to do some fundraising contacts associated with a project that they're interested, known as a lecture auditorium.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I have comments, but no.
Okay, comments. Mr. O'Neil.
All right. Without making any comments about whether this is a good or a bad idea, this is a premature idea, because this is discussing a lecture hall that has not actually been planned out yet, and it's more appropriate, I suspect, to bring it back as a study session item to discuss what it will look like, and then have a more full discussion with maybe the Chair of the Board of Library Trustees, and Tim Hetherton, who's sitting here. So I'd like to have more information about what the project will actually look like, because at this point, it still hasn't been approved by council. And I'd also like to know a little bit more about what the fundraising would entail, because waiving Council Policy A-5 would allow members of the Board of Library Trustees to go fundraise, perhaps in the city's name. And there are some ramifications of that that I'd like to explore just a slight bit more before voting on this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
I agree with postponing or tabling this item, although I do want to just say that I support the Board's, Board of Library Trustees' efforts to begin to think about fundraising. I commend that, the public-private partnership that I have spoken about often. So while this may be premature to bring the decision today on the calendar, I do support just taking a little bit more time to understand the concept, feasibility, and the total cost that ultimately will be needed to fundraise. But you're headed in the right direction, and the Board is, and I'm pleased to see that they want to look at a fund development plan, so I commend that. So I look forward to further discussions as it comes back to the council, so thank you.
Councilman Avery.
Yes, I'm very supportive as well. I just, I really knew nothing about it up until about 10 days ago. So my only thought is, I think, taking the time about 10 days ago. So, my only thought is, I think, taking the time and bringing all the council on board will just enhance the effort and make sure that it kind of gets off on the right foot, because we definitely, I think, want to be supportive. But speaking for myself, I just, I want to know more about it. Thank you.
I move to bring this back to council at a study session at the mayor's discretion.
I'll second that.
Open up to the public floor to make sure there are no comments on this item. All right, seeing no public comments, I will join. We'll be voting for it. I think the public would enjoy watching or learning about the ideas that the Library Board Trustees has, and we can be sure that it's done in a way that's transparent and in compliance with our city policies. So, hearing a motion in a second. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items, so things that we aren't here to discuss today? All right, seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Sue Dvorak, and I live in the Bluffs neighborhood, which surrounds Corona Del Mar High School. First, I want to thank you very much for making the move to install signs around Corona Del Mar High School designating parking hours. I and my neighbors appreciate this, as it has resulted in making our neighborhood safer. Pedestrian safety around the high school is extremely important to us. Thank you. I do want to bring to your attention, however, the fact that new street signs have not been installed identifying the day and time for street sweeping on Vista Del Oro and Mar Vista. The street sweeping signs were removed prior to the beginning of the school year in August 2016. No regular street sweeping has taken place since that time. My understanding is that there has been at least one attempt to sweep the streets, but it was unsuccessful since cars were parked along those streets. I believe council had discussed the idea of designated early Monday mornings prior to the start of school as a time of day that might work. I'm hoping you'll be able to move forward with a plan to have the street sweeping signs installed soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you leave your contact information, the city manager can give you an update on that. Thank you. All right, seeing no other speakers. We'll go to oral reports from city council members on committee activities. Mr. O'Neal.
None.
Mr. Pieter.
None.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes, I just want to give a brief update on finance committee activities today, even though it was on short notice. We had an economic forecast meeting at 4:00 PM this afternoon by an outside economic forecaster who spoke to the public. Thank you, staff, and if the finance director, Dan M., is here, thank you for organizing. Thank you, Dan. Thank you for organizing it. While it had macro updates on the national economy, he did drill down to Orange County and to Newport Beach and some interesting trend data regarding Newport Beach forecast, economic forecast, I think will, I know will inform our finance committee deliberations as we go forward. And so, to that point, I just want to update where we are on finance committee. We will be beginning shortly, I guess in the month of February, Mr. City Manager, I'm looking at you. Once we fully constitute our finance committee, we will be meeting on an aggressive schedule for the first six months of the year. We're planning on meeting two times per month, every other week, from February through May, if necessary, until the proposed budget is submitted to council. We have budget, pension, and debt issues that we are going to be reviewing. So, we have a busy work plan for the first six months of the year. So, Mr. City Manager, when will we start posting those dates? What is our expectation to do that?
I think your plan is to have the first finance committee meeting on February 16th, assuming that the candidates are named on the 14th.
Okay. All right. So, existing finance committee members plan on February 16th, and then we will be posting the meeting schedule for the rest of the year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
I have nothing.
Mr. Avery.
None.
Mayor Protem Duffield.
I have none.
And I have no committee reports, but I do have to report out that I attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors last week, and I had a very interesting seminars to attend, one of which was an interview of the Ford Motor Company Chair, William Ford Jr. And it's applicable to city business, because he outlined sort of a futuristic view of where we're headed with transportation and communications. I'm in the communication business, so I really enjoyed it. But we're heading towards the vision, what visionaries will say are driverless cars. I don't know if they'll be flying anytime soon. But I learned that much of space is actually wasted by us as humans and our habits, whether it's texting or driving too slowly, and traffic essentially will be eliminated, as stoplights maybe as well, based on the timing of these vehicles crossing intersections. So, it's looking beautiful, I think, for the future of transportation, the environment, for the future of Newport Beach. And so, it may even change green light gym. So, we'll see what the consequences are to our world, but it was an enjoyable conference. All right, public hearings.
So, this first item, Mr. Mayor and council members, is one you've seen previously, sorry, a similar item to this. This is issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds. And in effect, the city is acting in a manner that sets up the system and is not responsible for the liability associated with that. Dan's here and would have comments to make in a presentation if you saw that this was appropriate. Otherwise, you would conduct the public hearing and then ask any questions and follow through with the action. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. So, as Dave mentioned, this is related to the Uptown Newport project. The developer joint venture investment group is seeking to finance the construction of approximately 455 units and the issuance of $129 million, through the issuance of $192 million in tax-exempt bonds. Since these would be considered private activity bonds, federal law requires that the jurisdiction hold a public hearing on the proposed issuance. As the city manager mentioned, the city has previously held this meeting in January of last year. However, the federal tax law also requires that if 12 months pass, another hearing would be required to be held. So, that's what we're doing today, is essentially refreshing the Tefra hearing and our resolution. And if you have any further questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neal.
Very briefly, Dan, could you please clarify, we are not issuing one cent in bonds as a city, correct?
That is correct. The issuer is a joint powers agency, so they would not be issued by the city, and the city would have no obligation to repay those bonds. Our only action as governing body is to permit this within our jurisdiction.
Seeing no other questions, public comments.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the city council, my name is Jim Mosher. What would a hearing be if nobody testified? So, I will offer you some comments.
Quick, that's what a hearing would be.
As you might guess, I have some problems with this. The premise of it seems to be that you have the power given to you by the state or somebody to wave a magic wand that allows the private investors in this project, the Uptown Newport project, to pay no taxes on the income they receive from the developer. I have a problem with the idea that there's no governmental risk or cost involved. There may be no cost per se to the city of Newport Beach, but if these people are not paying taxes that the state and the rest of us would normally be receiving, it means that we, you, I, and everybody here is, in effect, subsidizing the project by making up for those last lost tax revenues that the city would be, city, state, and federal government would be getting from these investors. So, I have a little question why this is a particularly worthy project that we would be waving the magic wand over. I don't see them as being particularly good or deserving of that. It seems kind of like crony capitalism to me. And a point that I did not recall making at the last hearing about this, as to whether they are good, bad, or indifferent organization to be providing this large S to, in addition to this hearing having happened a year ago, a year before that, on April 28, 2015, I noticed item 13 on the city council agenda was for the city to participate in another of this joint powers operation, something called the statewide community infrastructure program, specifically to allow this same developer to finance $59 million of public benefit fees that the city would be receiving, for the purpose that the city would receive them sooner rather than earlier. Yet, if I'm not mistaken, between then and now, they asked to change the development agreement. So, instead of getting the impact fees with the beginning of construction, they would become available to us as units are developed. So, I'm curious whether that deal that was approved two years ago was through the same joint powers thing was ever implemented, and whether that $59 million that the developer has to provide through public benefits is being, again, through this different mechanism, being re-approved. But Uptown Newport seems to promise a lot of things, and they don't quite happen. So, they bother me, and I'm not sure we should be waving the magic wand over them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, seeing none. I have some questions myself. We've been down this bond route before, Dan, but it's a much more lightheaded conversation today. Would you mind answering Jim's question, because I'm intrigued by it as well?
Well, I think he's referring to the amendment to the development agreement about the timing of when the development fees are paid. I may have to defer to the community development director or one of their staff members to better speak to that issue.
But does this bond a part of that or affect that, or is it totally separate? It looks like Kim Brant nodded her head, no, it's not part of it.
Yeah, I don't have any recollection that the amendment to the agreement has anything to do with the financing.
Okay, so just so I understand entirely. So, the city is not issuing the actual bond?
Correct.
And we're not guaranteeing the actual bond or overseeing it?
Correct.
If we were to vote no, well, I'm wondering why we're even asked about what happens if we were to vote no. I'm trying to understand the whole process.
They wouldn't, the private entity wouldn't be able to issue tax-exempt bonds. And what a tax-exempt bond means is the buyer of the bond essentially would be buying something akin to a municipal bond, where the, he wouldn't have to pay, the bondholder wouldn't have to pay interest, pay taxes on the interest received from the borrower. And so, that is not something that a private activity can typically do. That is a right reserve for municipalities. So, when you have a private developer step in within the jurisdiction and propose a tax-exempt borrowing that would be levied against the property owners, the federal tax law requires that we give the developer that permission. If we say no, they would be required, they would be on their own in terms of seeking financing in taxable markets.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions or discussion from council?
And the, excuse me.
One sec.
Okay.
So, if there were to be some default, is the city held responsible, faithful faith and credit of the city behind this in any way?
There is not.
Okay, thank you.
Offering this type of bond, what's the advantage? Is it more attractive to the purchaser? Is there more incentive to purchase?
Sure. So, if you were to buy a bond from, you were an investor and you bought a bond, the interest that you would receive typically would be taxable. It would be a taxable dividend and, or taxable interest on the coupon. In this case, it would be similar to a muni bond. That interest would be nontaxable. Therefore, the issuer, yeah, sorry, the investor would be willing to accept a lower interest rate. So, the benefit to the developer is he'd get a cheaper financing rate on this.
Thank you.
Remember, too, this overall project has an affordable housing component. That's why there are other public merits to this project beyond the obvious.
Councilman Avery.
How common is this in municipalities in California?
It's very common. So, when there's, we've done this several times for Hoag, for example, where there is a community benefit. We've done it for a local church to help them issue bonds. So, where a city deems that there is a public benefit to the community abroad, they could use their, they could either act as the conduit itself and issue bonds in the city's name for this project. In this case, the joint powers of counties is actually the named issuer of the bonds. But since it's in our jurisdiction, we still have to allow that entity to, permission to issue bonds in our jurisdiction. But it is very common.
And so, the affordable housing is a public benefit?
Yes. And they're multifamily residential units, so providing affordable housing is deemed to be a public benefit.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? We have a motion.
I move.
We have a motion in a second to move the staff item.
Mayor Muldoon and, okay, and, okay, go ahead. The motion carries six one with Mayor Muldoon voting no.
All right, item number 14. Ms. Brant.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Muldoon. Good evening, members of the council. I'm Kim Brant, Community Development Director. Just to tag on to what Finance Director Matta Chevett said, this is a refresher, or hit the refresh button on item number 14. You have previously considered an amendment to the local coastal program for the Lido House Hotel to grant additional square footage. And we've looked at this several times, both through, for the local coastal land use plan as well as the implementation plan. We, in our last ordinance adoption, we did not include specific language directing staff to submit an application to the California Coastal Commission. And so, we have brought back a resolution for you to consider. That gives the explicit direction to staff, consistent with the Coastal Act, to submit an application. And Mr. Jim Campbell here is to answer any questions, if need be.
All right, let's see if need be. Any questions from the dais? Councilwoman Dixon.
I don't have any questions. This is a technical changes to accommodate just the integrating of our local coastal plan. So, I move that we adopt this item.
I'll second it.
Any comments from the dais before we go to the public? Any debate? Nope. Any public comments?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. My name once more is Jim Mosher. As councilperson Dixon said, this is pretty much a technical redo of something you already approved in the past. So, it's probably not an appropriate time to debate again the merits of it. But as Director Brant said, it's also a refresher.
of it, but as Director Brandt said, it's also a refresher, so I wanted to refresh the memory especially, and, and inform the new council members that the reason the size of the Lido House Hotel needs to be increased is that the original entitlement of 98,625 square feet, and to the exact foot, was determined not because it was the reasonable or appropriate or necessary size for building the hotel that was envisioned, but because that was the exact number of square feet that could be entitled on that property according to the city staff without having a green light vote for it. And the reason we're now adding 4,745 square feet to that is not because 4,745 square feet is the reasonable or necessary number to make the hotel whatever it was originally planned to be, but someone came up with the bizarre idea, reading the city charter and the green light, that if you'd once approved a project, it left 20% of that left over for another project. So totally out of sync with what that charter provision was meant to be, that 20% is now being added back onto the same project, which in effect means when the, when the green light measure in our charter says that you can approve 40,000 square feet adding to the general plan without a vote, now it suddenly is 50,000 square feet, because a given project can come here one night and ask for 40,000, the next can come back two weeks later and ask to add 20% of that, 8,000, and so on, until they get up to the 50,000 they wanted all along. And then the real underlying problem is whether the original 98,625 was mistakenly said not to require a green light vote, that's why the number was chosen, but that's based on the assumption that the voters had approved 75,000 square feet on that property in Lido Village for a city hall, which ignores the fact that the voters had moved the city hall to this location. So one wonders how that entitlement could have been in both places at the same time. And that leaves a lot of political mess that this council now has to deal with because the public doesn't quite buy all of what happened then. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Sherman Stacy, I'm here on behalf of R.D. Olson Development, which is the builder of the Lido House Hotel. We ask that you approve this resolution, they are technical matters because the Coastal Commission staff was not satisfied with the wording in the resolution you adopted on December 13th. The comments made by Mr. Mosher were made at the last hearing, were made at the hearing at which you approved the amendment to the code, and the decisions that he says the public is not accepting are decisions that this council has made commencing back in 2015 with regard to this project. So he has a problem, but I don't think anyone else does. So we would ask you to do it, and since we have to transmit, or your staff has to transmit the resolution to the Coastal Commission before it's officially filed, we're trying to get on the March agenda, I would ask if the mayor and the city clerk could sign it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Muldoon, my name is George Schroeder, and I'm a 30-year resident in West Newport Beach. Just in case somebody turned on the TV for the first time half an hour ago, I just want to make it perfectly clear, the residents in West Newport Beach, and overall the residents in all of Newport Beach are entirely behind the Lido House Hotel and are extremely happy that it's going along, and we're very happy to have you pass this, this evening, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, and seeing no request to speak from the dais, let's vote.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
The motion carries unanimously, seven, zero.
May I keep it, Ms. Brandt?
Mayor Muldoon?
Yes, Mr. Herman?
I need to recuse myself from this item. In consulting with the city attorney's office, I'm recusing myself because of an abundance of caution based on my interest in real property on both the big and little Balboa Islands.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, members of the council. I'm here at the dais with Deputy, Deputy Director Brenda Wisneski, who is going to make the presentation on the appeal of the planning commission's approval of a use permit for the Village Inn located on Balboa Island. Since we have an appellant this, this evening as well as an applicant, our intent is to give a, a staff presentation and then followed by the appellant's remarks, and then the applicant's, and then of course at any time we're available to take any questions from the city council. And then after the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, we would suggest that would be a good time to open it up for public comment. So with that, unless you have any questions on the format going forward, we can proceed, Brenda can go ahead and proceed with her presentation, excuse me, presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon, fellow council members, Brenda Wisneski. As was mentioned before, each night is a consideration of an appeal of the planning commission's approval for a use permit for outdoor dining, excuse me, at the Village Inn. The planning commission approved the project on November 3rd, 2016. Specifically before you again is consideration of the appeal, and because the outdoor dining area is located in the public sidewalk that does modify components of policy L-21, the council is also asked to consider modifications of policy 21. And then lastly, because the outdoor seating area does displace existing bike racks located Long Marine, we're asking for the council's direction pertaining to that. Just to orient you, the Village Inn is an existing restaurant that's located on Balboa Island at the corner of Park Avenue and Marine Avenue. To, our records indicate that the building has been there since 1933, and that some type of restaurant has been there since that time as well. The restaurant is located at the end of the commercial corridor, at the southern end, and is surrounded by both single-family and two-unit residential, as well as commercial to the north, and the fire station across the street. Here's some photographs of the, the Village Inn. As you can see, the, the restaurant is located on the ground level, and there is an existing restaurant on the second level, I'm sorry, residential on the second level. The application is for a conditional use permit to allow outdoor dining to be established along Marine Avenue. It would entail about 200 square feet and 16 seats. The hours of the restaurant internally is currently from 7:00 AM to midnight, however, the outdoor seating area would be limited to close at 9:00 PM, but at 10:00 PM on certain holidays such as Memorial Day and 4th of July. They will be required to close the outdoor dining area earlier if entertainment is offered. Here's the existing floor plan as shown, and the blue area is the, the dining area, the outdoor dining area. It would be improved with sliding accordion double-pane windows, and as you see from the previous photographs, it would replace the existing single-pane windows that are located along the elevation. That's shown in this picture. The, and here are the existing bike racks that'd also be displaced. The area also would be, have to be raised to allow for ADA access from the street, so it would be a raised platform, about eight and a half to 10 inches in height, in order for it to be even with the interior floor, and it would be surrounded by a 36-inch wrought iron railing. And again, the sliding glass double-pane windows would be sound attenuated, and they would bifold, so they would be opened. The, the opened windows are required because, as seen in the previous diagrams, the depth of the outdoor area is just four, four feet. The idea is that you'd be able to open the accordion windows, and the servers and the guests would be able to basically utilize a little bit of the indoor area to take orders and to circulate around the area. And one of the questions is, you know, why would we want something like this in a public area? And I just want to highlight that we actually have a land use policy that identifies that we want to encourage this type of activity, in that it does activate the public sidewalks, particularly in our, in our commercial areas. As I mentioned, a request for the council to waive a portion of L-21 is also requested. Policy L-21 again is sidewalk cafe standards, and the idea is that we would, it's developed in order to encourage outdoor dining. The first modification is related to the sidewalk width, sidewalk width. Right now, the sidewalk is proposed to be six feet, two and a quarter inches, and the policy identifies in heavy pedestrian traffic areas, ideally it should be eight feet. So in this case, it's slightly above six. Again, barriers, the, should be sectional in nature and easily removed. In this case, because it is a platform, the railings would be fixed, however, we do think it is appropriate in this situation because we do expect them to serve alcohol out there in accordance with the ABC, you'd want to have some fixed barriers. Sidewalk alterations, the policy does indicate that we should not alter the sidewalk anyway, however, I mentioned, in order to comply with ADA requirements, and even a level interior floor shall be equal with the outdoor area, therefore the outdoor area would have to be increased in height, basically a concrete platform. And the other one is the distance from the corner of the building, and that is the corner building that's at the corner of Marine and Park. It identifies a need for the outdoor, outdoor area to be 10 feet back from the corner of the building, and the purpose of that, I think, is to allow for visibility of turning that corner, in this case it's eight feet, five and a half inches, and Public Works Director feels that it is appropriate to maintain that distance, and that there is not a, a public safety issue being created. As mentioned here, it is recommended by staff to support the waiver of those components of L-21. As was mentioned also, the bike racks would be displaced as a result of this project, and actually reflective of the bike master plan, whoops, what happened here? The Public Works Director and Public Works Department worked closely with the applicant in looking at the operation of bike corrals. The concept is presented in the, in the top corner there, and that again is just a concept, but this is a type of application that again was mentioned in the bike master plan, and the idea is that you'd utilize public right-of-way, actually within the roadway, to establish these corrals that would be protected in some way from the circulation system. And on Marine Avenue, we have an opportunity to locate these in areas where we have red curbing. There is extensive areas of red curbing along the areas that's in the photo here, next to the pedestrian walkways. Again, those red curbings were created to ensure that there's visibility of the, the parked cars aren't blocking the visibility of pedestrians crossing, however, bikes can go in that location because they would not be impeded, because they're not solid objects, you'd still be able to see through them. So this is still a concept, Public Works is still working in the specifics of the design, but we do feel there's opportunities on either the 200 or 300 blocks of Marine to re-establish at least 20 bike racks that would replace the ones displaced from Village Inn. The Balboa Island Merchants Association also looked at this idea, and they are supportive of the concept. Lastly, I did mention here, the applicant has been conditioned to contribute $12,000 towards the construction installation of these items, and the Public Works indicates they feel that would satisfy the total cost. I want to go over a little bit about how is the business currently regulated. In 2009, the, a use permit was issued, previous to that, they didn't have any entitlements for use permits because it was in place for so long. So the first two, first use permit was established in 2009, and that was for basically a remodel of the, the business and to basically recognize the alcohol license that had been in place for some time. At that point, it was conditioned to prohibit dancing, as well as requiring them to close at midnight, prior to that they can go to 2:00 AM. And lastly, for the doors to be closed at 8:00 PM. Another entitlement that they are subject to is a 2012 live entertainment permit that was issued to the new owners. The owners are there today, they have owned the property since 2012, and that's why you will see some of the improvements that have happened have sent, have occurred since they have purchased the property. With that 2012 live entertainment permit, they were subject to being no more than five musicians, the doors and windows to be closed during entertainment, and lastly, for the noise levels not to exceed 60 decibels at the sidewalk, recognizing that certain spikes would happen consistent with typical noise environments. In addition to that, obviously they are subject to the city's noise ordinance, that again, during the evenings, it's 50 decibels at residential properties, and then during the daytime, 55 and 60 on the commercial properties. Another thing I wanted to highlight is the, how this operation, how this business is operating, and this provides you a list of what we call calls for service since 2012. And they have increased all the up to 12 calls, and to 2014 where we have had zero calls. What I want to highlight for you is the year 2015, where there were 12 calls for service. And in looking at the police records, this is a combination of both the police departments and code enforcement calls, and what the calls indicate is we, in visiting the property, there was no, either no found violations, or it was basically advisement was provided, indicating that there was nothing of significance found. However, in 2015, because there were so many calls, it was put on basically a heightened level of alert, so there was a focused patrol that occurred in 2015 where the police department went out on eight additional occasions to evaluate the, the operations, see if there's any concerns that were occurring, and there were no violations or no concerns that were concerned at that time that would raise the level of, of concern related to the business itself. So we proceed in 2016, again, three calls, but again, there was nothing that rose to of concern to the police department or code enforcement. And I am joined by Wendy Jo, a civil, what's her nickname, the civil direct, the police department representative, thank you, and also Cassie Palmer from the senior code enforcement officer, who can talk to you a little more of the specifics, and my understanding is when police department goes out there and they monitor the situation, in one case, a window was left open during the time of live entertainment was offered, they'll ask them to close the window, situations handled. So there have never been a situation where the police department goes out there and see if there's a major infraction, if there were, they would contact code enforcement to go out there the next day, potentially issue a notice of violation, or additional surprise visits would occur over time. So the only violation that has been issued, the only notice that's been issued is in 2015, we issued a notice because there was some unpermitted improvements done to the interior of the building. There was a wall that was removed that was, had been there for quite some time, so the notice was issued to indicate to bring that wall into compliance with the building code. The wall has not been replaced today because we do recognize that that could be resolved through this use permit. If this use permit is approved tonight, the existing floor plan that's there today would be, be authorized. As we see today, that the current operation is in substantial compliance with the required use permit and live entertainment. Going to the conditions of approval that were issued by the planning commission in our 40 tonight, the outdoor dining area again would be from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM and 10:00 PM on certain evenings. The relocation and installation of bike racks is required in order for us to maintain that important asset to the island. The glass doors should be noise attenuated, indicating that those will be an improvement to the existing condition, which is single-pane. Crystal panels, we, there is, there are two noise studies that were done prior to the planning commission's review that concurred at the fact that the existing operation currently complies with the city's noise standards, as well as the outdoor dining is projected to comply with the noise standards. The nice thing about the noise assessment is it did identify certain interior improvements that could be completed. Some have already been done by the, by the operator, by installing the noise buffering inside, they have a sound curtain, and again, pointing out the fact that the double-pane windows would be sound attenuated as well as firm molding to that to ensure there's no noise leakage. The planning commission also conditioned the project to reduce the number of musicians from five to four. An operator's license would also be required. This is an operator's license that was issued by the chief of police, and what it basically does is provides the police department a higher level of control for operators. If it's deemed that the operator is not complying with the license itself, they have the ability to prohibit them from serving alcohol belong, beyond 10, I'm sorry, 11:00 PM. And we see this as a great tool to ensure the operators are following the rules and being good neighbors. And lastly, the planning commission did require noise measurements to be, to occur after the fact. Once the outdoor dining area is up and going, the requirement is that there would be some noise measurements done by an outside consultant, and those, the results of those would be presented to the planning commission for review. If any further improvements would be needed, that could be identified at that time. So as I mentioned, the planning commission did approve of the project, and some of the highlights is the fact that they do, felt, they felt that the project complied with the findings of the use permit, and that the use would be compatible with the neighborhood. They were... They were intrigued by the fact that there was the noise studies that demonstrated compliance with the city's noise ordinance and identified additional noise attenuation measures, and that the other appropriate conditions were identified, as mentioned here. As was mentioned, an appeal has been filed by the neighbor who has located two properties south of the restaurant itself. The restaurant, as I mentioned, is located at the corner, 123. The same property owner of the restaurant actually owns a property next door at 123. 120, and then the appellant is the one property over, shown here in the left in yellow. The basis of the appeal are concerns related to the proximity of the residents to the outdoor dining area. And in fact, the outdoor dining area is approximately 35 feet from the nearest residence. However, we do feel that it has been demonstrated that it does comply with the noise ordinance, and it would be compatible with the neighborhood. No other outdoor dining areas, they indicate, are close to adjacent zone properties. However, the city does have several mixed-use zones, so I think we can identify other areas that might be similar to this. And the key is that we have become very well educated on trying to integrate these type of uses together. The conditions we have formed are based upon past experiences in dealing with restaurants, and the conditions that we have presented tonight actually have been used in other situations that we have felt have been very effective. And lastly, the concerns or statements have been made that the operator is not currently complying with their entitlements, but I think that from a staff point of view, we feel that they are in substantial compliance. So lastly, the recommendation is listed here of demonstrating compliance with CEQA, upon the Planning Commission's review of the use permit. I did circulate to you a memo identifying two amendments to the conditions of approval, and we can review those, just basically clean up of a couple of the conditions, as well as some conditions you might want to look at to consider. Waiver of portions of L-21, and requiring an encroachment permit for the outdoor dining area. And lastly, directing staff to relook at the bike corrals on 200, 300 block of Marine Avenue. That concludes my presentation. I'm certainly available for questions, and the appellant and applicant are both here tonight.
Thank you. Before we direct the dais, ask questions, I prefer to have Representative for the appellant speak first, and the applicant second, and then bring it back for questions. So is Representative of the appellant ready to speak? Thank you, please state your name, you have 10 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Mike Sullivan, I live at 121 Marine Avenue. I've lived there for 38 years. Right with you, and I'm going to make a short statement, if I can get the right glasses on. I represent the Marine Avenue Homeowners Association, which includes virtually every homeowner and permanent resident on our tightly knit block at the 100 block of Marine. The Village Inn is asking the city to grant them outdoor dining privileges immediately adjacent to residential properties that are in a residential zone. This combination does not exist in a single place in our city, not one single place. And by the way, the nearest residence is one foot away, not my house. Our association is unanimously opposed to this expansion. This application asks for much more than dining privileges on the right-of-way. They seek to build a permanent structure on the public sidewalk. Permanent structures on the public sidewalk are specifically prohibited by City Council Policy L-6, not mentioned. And this is no small structure, it's 240 square feet of raised concrete, nine inches high, surrounded by a 50-foot wrought iron fence, permanently attached to the building. Such permanent structures are specifically prohibited by Council Policy L-6. These inescapable facts negate the very description of this application in the Planning Staff Report, which cites City Policy L-21 as the basis for the application for sidewalk dining. This is not sidewalk dining. Instead, this is a permanent structure, structural addition to the building itself, using 12 tons of concrete to raise the sidewalk to increase the floor space area of the bar. In addition, the proposed multiple doors are so wide that the interior is almost completely open from the floor to the ceiling, from the bar to the sidewalk, as if there were no wall at all. Passersby, young and old, will have unobstructed viewing and hearing from the sidewalk to the huge circular bar. This is not just open-air dining for a few tables, as described by the planning staff. This is an open-air sports bar. When you open up almost an entire wall, you create a giant megaphone effect. The noise from the bar will hit the neighborhood by way of a perfectly shaped 50-foot megaphone, if you can picture that. No other establishment in our city has opened up a wall, certainly not a 50-foot wall, out onto the sidewalk. There has never been a single such open wall sidewalk dining permit granted to any existing establishment in the city, not even in the commercial zone, and this is right next to our houses. All other sidewalk dining permits that have been granted by the city utilize the existing doors leading to the tables and chairs placed on the sidewalk at sidewalk level. At the end of the business day, the sidewalk becomes a sidewalk again. Planning staff never mentioned Policy L-6, which specifically prohibits the described structure. A city sidewalk should never be freely given as a land grant to be built upon. I submit that the above, I submit that above all other mandates, the council has a mandate to protect the peace and quiet of residents in our homes. Now, I've got a lot more to say, and a lot of it is very hard-hitting, but in the interest of a compromise, I would like to turn the microphone over to a representative from the Village Inn to see if we can reach an alternative agreement before I continue. Would that be all right with you?
Yes, you will have the opportunity to have a rebuttal as well, so we will just seize your time at this point.
Well, I'd like, if this doesn't work out, I'd like an opportunity to continue my 10 minutes that I was going to begin with.
Well, okay, so right now, I'm showing you about six minutes left, we will add some time to your rebuttal.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And Representative for the applicant, please come forward.
This is Carol McDermott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm pleased to be here to present the presentation on behalf of the owner-operator of the Village Inn. And I'm going to move through this quickly. As many of you know, there's been late afternoon discussions about some possible changes, and yet, I think it's important to underscore the approval of the Planning Commission, which we worked very hard to obtain, and I'm going to run through this very quickly. And I also would like to create the right of rebuttal so that we can have the dialogue that may be in everyone's best interest. We've talked about the location of the Village Inn, and I do think it's very important to note, pointer's not working, that it's directly across from the fire station, and the proposed sidewalk dining does not extend further than the boundary across the street from the fire station. Thank you. It's an important part of island history, we've been around for over 80 years, and there's always been a restaurant on this location, and it's taken various forms, and they've been a part of the community for that length of time. Dan Miller, a man of integrity and character, and he's enhanced the restaurant, and he is serving on the BIA and the Merchants Association, and was asked to be on both of them. So our objectives really are to enhance the island experience, much like the dining does in the recently approved other outdoor sidewalk dining. We want to attenuate noise more effectively, and this gives us the opportunity to do that, and to remain consistent with our ABC license and the entertainment permit, and to commit to additional conditions of approval as necessary. We do request an amendment to the existing use permit and the waiver as described. We believe that there are grounds for that, and that there are reasons why that will enhance this location, and why outdoor seating would be appropriate. We want to replace the old windows with the full-height, bi-fold, multi-fold, noise-attenuating doors. There will be double-pane windows, they are sound attenuating to an STC 34, which is a very high level. And I would point out that in the elevation, I'll show you in a moment, there are not complete openings all the way across the frontage, but rather, this, I'm so sorry, pointing, thank you, that is remaining fixed, there will be no windows in that location, there will be no windows in this location, and there's a narrow area beyond that, there will be no windows. So it's not going to be a full 50-foot opening out onto Marine Avenue. And it is required to be ADA compliant, which is why we have asked for the curb to be elevated to the elevation of the restaurant itself. I want to point out too, that while there have been complaints about the bike racks on our property, which were alleged to be only the attendants at, you know, patrons of the restaurant, we found that, we did a survey, and only 19% of the users of those bike racks are actually patrons of the restaurant. And so, we spent a lot of time working to see what a good solution would be about bike racks, we could move them further away from the residents, and bike corrals are the new techniques, and ones that Public Works found to be a very suitable opportunity, and unanimously approved by the Merchants Association. Now, you have to belong to the Merchants Association to be represented by them, and not all merchants do, but the merchants that belong were notified, and the board approved that, those bike racks. And we've spoken to that here, as indicated in the staff report. So we currently only cover 20 bikes. The new bike corrals could accommodate up to 44, and our $12,000 fee was vetted very carefully with examples from other local jurisdictions to ensure that it would pay for the purchase and the installation. So an acoustical analysis was prepared, and the staff has already gone through that very well. But what's interesting is that we have two properties that we own, one residential and one mixed-use, so there's two different noise standards, but we're able to meet both of those noise standards. We took noise measurements at each of these locations specifically to ensure that we could understand the noise coming from the indoors and the noise extending outward, and these are the locations of those measurements. And the existing noise contours, it's important to note that the 65 dB, which is the allowed, really doesn't extend beyond our property ownership, and it's only the very lower levels of sound that emanate from this general area, and I will indicate that ambient noise levels on this street are greater than the city's noise standard. But the future noise environment with our upgraded sound attenuating brings those noise contours even closer to our building, and that's a very specific responsibility that we've accepted with the noise attenuation. And we even tested the patron noise level with outdoor dining, so that if the doors were open and we had diners eating out there during the day, what those noise levels would be, and once again, the turquoise line there extends to the southerly edge of our property, but that is only at the 50 dB, which is still consistent with the noise ordinance. So we've tried to respond to our neighbors, and reasonable people, I suppose, can differ, but we've revised our hours of operation, our customers are going to be moved inside prior to an entertainment, we've got double-pane noise attenuating doors and windows and threshold seals, our speakers will be oriented away from Marine Avenue. We've, on our own, in advance of this hearing, placed a circular noise barrier around the roof vent, and you don't hear our roof vent, but you can stand on Park Avenue or Marine, and you can hear roof vents from other restaurants down Marine Avenue. So we've already taken that to heart. And we also offered a plexiglass barrier to be installed around the foretop table right at the end of the proposed outdoor dining. And while we're currently allowed five-piece bands, we're limiting to a maximum of four. And we also have taken great note over the last six months to a year of the kind of entertainers that we were hiring. And we have fired a couple of noisy bands that wouldn't conform to the standards that Dan wanted to impose, and so as a result, we have much quieter entertainment in response to our neighbors in advance of this approval. So with all of those, we've installed the curtains, we've got acoustical panels already installed, we even have noise attenuating paint, I didn't even know there was such a thing, but that's been used. And we took the window controls away, so nobody could inadvertently or purposely open windows that were not supposed to be opened during entertainment. So our entertainers are now abiding by the volume standards, and the sound barrier curtains are used along the eastern window, I'm sorry, it's actually the southerly, so as to further attenuate any sound. So we're addressing them in many ways, as have been outlined and repeated, and the equipment of these weather-tight seals and the threshold closure system is a real advantage, I think, to the neighborhood. And as staff indicated, the code enforcement officer is here, I'm repeating the information that was given to the Planning Commission that was instrumental, I think, in them making the decision that they did, and the police reports have shown no recent noise violations. So we have found widespread support, and I would point out on this exhibit, the supporters that signed a recent petition in support of our application for outdoor dining, we even have a supporter on Marine Avenue, which means that there is perhaps somewhat less than unanimous opposition. So with that, I would like to indicate that we are requesting approval of the outdoor dining and the Policy L-21, and to the extent that there is discussion about revisions that are not included in the Planning Commission approval, we would certainly like to be able to respond to that during the rebuttal, and will be happy to address your concerns, as well as those of the neighbors, as we believe is being done by the current approval of the Planning Commission. So with that, thank you very much, and both Dan and I are here to answer questions. Dan Miller is the owner-operator, and his partner Charlie Kinsler, both here with a commitment to enhancing the business environment of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. No applause, please. Thank you for being respectful, I appreciate that. At this time, council's going to ask questions of staff, appellant, and applicant, and then we will open it up to public comments. So I believe, Mr. Pieter, you have your first up.
Thanks. It was kind of interesting going through the staff report and seeing the original approval in 2009, and I signed it when I was on the Planning Commission. So I'm intimately familiar with the project, was involved in the approval back in 2009. And so, I met with Mr. Sullivan, I met with the applicant, and, you know, some questions came up that were kind of, gee, is there a way, is there a middle ground here at all? It was kind of funny, Mr. Sullivan and I, and Diane Dixon had a little bit of input into it, that, you know, if we split the baby and you only had half the seating area on Marine, and you accessed it from the outside rather than the inside, gee, that would be great, because you wouldn't have any openings. But of course, you can't sit there and expect somebody to go out the main door with, you know, a tray with a couple of beers and burgers on it and serve it across the fence. You didn't have ADA access, you didn't have all these other things, it really needs to be up at finished-floor elevation with all of those doors open. But it got me thinking that, gee, is there another way to do this? You know, why can't we expand Park Avenue, move most of the dining over there, and then you could access this little northerly part on Marine, in effect, from the dining area on Park? So I kind of threw the idea out at Public Works, because the street's a lot wider right there. And if, Mr. Webb, if you would mind throwing up your little illustration with some of the dimensions, and we can kind of walk through that.
Thank you, Councilman Pieter. Yes, we took a relook at this, and went back and talked to our traffic folks, and saw if we could come up with a bit of a compromise that maybe addresses what Councilman Pieter is looking at. Some good creativity by the council member and our traffic staff, being a little linear, but got a chance to look at this a little more in depth, and we even have a solution for you. The slide you're looking at here- The slide you're looking at here is the existing lanes, basically, on Park Avenue. As you notice, we have a six-foot sidewalk in front of the inn, seven-foot parking lane. We have a 10-foot travel lane. A key component of this area is that 12-foot loading area. A lot of the trucks for the merchants use that area to park, because it's really tight around the island to find places to park. Then we have another travel lane there of 12 feet, parking on the other side and a six-foot sidewalk. So, one of the suggestions was, what if we came out and widened on the Park Avenue side? So we looked at this option here. If we were to encroach into the public right-of-way three feet of the existing sidewalk, and recognize, too, that the Village Inn sets back two foot from the property line, so they'd be able to do a five-foot expansion along here, we could then move the curb out three feet. And we could still provide the travel lanes, although they'd be 11-foot wide, which is fine. Our minimum lane is 10 feet, but this would still give you a little breathing room there. We could allow it, keep the 11-foot truck-loading area to help with the merchants and their use of the area. But we would look at maybe changing the parking configuration a little. We have a lot of golf carts that work on the island. We've had requests in the past for golf cart parking. If you're familiar with the island, we have golf cart parking up at Balboa Avenue. So this might be an opportunity to change those three standard stalls out to probably six golf cart parking spots. And then you'd get, basically, gain a parking there. That's the proposal we think we could come up with, if that works with the applicant and the council member.
Thanks, Mr. Webb. Would you mind, Brenda, throwing the applicant's site plan up there again? So, the proposal was, gee, if we, now, obviously, the applicant would have to reconstruct and relocate this curb, but in effect, by putting the golf cart parking there, we pick up two feet, and by taking one foot out of the existing street, we end up with enough space that the applicant can have his dining area at the north side, where you've got commercial across the street instead of residential. All of his doors and openings would be in those existing windows on Park Avenue rather than on Marine. And you'd end up with, it's tight at five feet, because he won't have as many doors, because he doesn't have as many existing windows there. But I think it works. The public would still get the same six-foot sidewalk that they would on Marine, but here now, they have it on Park, without really taking much away from the public thoroughfare. He'll have some additional costs, and when he comes around on Marine, he's basically taking half. If you, if you go to the site plan, or if you can kind of highlight the site plan where that sheer wall starts, I don't know if you can enlarge that so people can see it a little easier or not. No enlarging allowed, just, do you have a larger plan? So, there's an existing sheer wall there. Its dimension is being 20 feet. So in effect, you're taking half the bike rack out and putting a four-foot dining area in, which would be serviced from Park, so there'd be no doors on Marine at all. And all of the openings would be on Park, and they would service that small area on Marine from the area on Park. And the, so then, instead of a $12,000 contribution to relocate bike racks, you'd keep half the bike rack there on the south side, and then relocate the ones that you're displacing along Marine. So you'd kind of kill two birds with one stone. You'd get most of the people, especially kids, that didn't want to ride their bike up Marine at all, and they could still park here in this location. And the, you'd still get some new bike corrals up on Marine, so that those people that are coming from the north side or ride their bike and tie their bike up on a tree or a bench, now will have a bike corral off the sidewalk to be able to handle that. So it helps the bike situation while still maintaining this rack here for kids that don't want to ride their bikes on Marine at all, even a block to get up there. The existing doors that they have on Park would remain as-is. They would have to put their dining areas in between them. And, and we don't really lose any thoroughfare. So there would be, that would be the operational side. And then, on top of that, the applicant has agreed from a, not just from a physical side, but from the operational side primarily, on his entertainment permit to, and you've got a memorandum on the dais that was available out front, that identifies some of these. So, right now, he's allowed to run the operation of the restaurant till midnight, and run his entertainment also to midnight. And he's agreed to do midnight on Fridays and Saturdays only, and, excuse me, Fridays and Saturdays, and then on school nights, and we're just going to use, like, the Newport Mesa calendar, he would cut it off at 10:00. The entertainment would cut off at 10:00. The restaurant would still stay open till midnight. Live entertainment, I live real close to the Port Restaurant. The Port Restaurant is similar. It has residential 40 feet across the street. They limit theirs to the type of instruments. And so, they don't allow percussion, so no drums and no brass. They allow piano strings and woodwinds only. So, now, again, the applicant doesn't have a problem with that, because the low subwoofer sounds are the ones that bug the neighbors, and a lot of the bands that he brings in don't have or can play without that as well. So that, that's, and right now, they have five, and the CP, or the recommendation from the PC was to go to four musicians. And I'm okay staying four. I know there may be some discussion at the council that maybe three's okay, but I think four is fine. So I don't have a problem changing any of that. So, the hours, limiting the entertainment to cut off at, on what I call "school nights" till 10:00 is a big deal. And the airplanes stop at 10:00. 10:00 is a good time for the island. It quiets down. And then, of course, the sound curtains would be closed on the south wall. You'd upgrade the door on the south wall, as already conditioned. And really, and televisions, the televisions wouldn't be oriented so that the public could view it from the sidewalk. In other words, you're not extending what some people would term as a sports bar out to the sidewalk. But the people that are there and participating, and our customers, obviously, would be able to see them. And then the outdoor seating wouldn't be enclosed in any way. We're not looking at expanding the square footage of the restaurant. We're looking at providing outdoor dining. Solar shades or something like that's fine, but we don't want a tent set up around it. Park Avenue doesn't have any covering over the tables, and he would be allowed to put an awning or some sort of a cover that would meet with code and encroach into the public right-of-way to cover the tables out front. And I've run this by both the applicant and the owner, or the appellant and the applicant, I guess would be a better way to say it. And they, they both kind of agreed, we wouldn't limit the number of seats, we limit the area. And so if code, by the time he meets ADA and fire and exit codes, he gets 10 seats or 24 seats, I don't care. So we're limiting that, the square footage, and not really what he does in the square footage, other than it's obviously dining. So that's the proposal. I've got some other question, I've got, I'm available to council if you've got any questions on it. And I actually did mark up a, the resolution with exactly where they would occur, where those comments would occur. So if you want, we can, if you want, we can go over those now, or we can go over them later.
Thank you, Mr. Pieter. Let's go over those in a little bit later. Very impressive presentation from an architect. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Councilmember Pieter. I'm delighted to hear that if we've reached some kind of, perhaps, a preliminary agreement amongst, between the parties, just to ask a clarifying question, then, on the Marine Avenue side, is your expectation, is the expectation that there would be outdoor dining on half of that originally-proposed area?
Correct. It would only be from that sheer wall, which, if you look at the plan that's on the screen now, you've got that circle, and it's basically the south side of that circle, and then from there to the corner, north to the corner.
And then it goes around the corner on Park Avenue.
And it would be contiguous with the Park Avenue dining, because that's how the servers would actually get to these patrons.
I see. And then, does the Park Avenue area, does that sidewalk structural elevation occur as well?
The, I don't know the exact grades. Looking at it from the pictures, it looks like the grade of the finished floor is much closer to the existing sidewalk grade, so there would, they would need to still have that dining area at finished floor for ADA accessibility, but they might be able to do it contiguous with the sidewalk without having a separate curb.
Okay. And then also, there was some discussion about redirecting the interior stage area where the band would be, the musicians would be positioned. What is your expectation?
You know, I talked to both Mr. Sullivan and the applicant, and the way that we kind of resolved it was that the proposal is to put it up by the fireplace, and then aim the speakers to the west. But I think it would be wise, and I've marked up the conditions, that basically, if the applicant decided, hey, for sound reasons, I'd like to move the stage over someplace else, like, for instance, where it's currently at, and aim the speakers north and west, instead of just west, that they could propose it to the Director of Community Development. The Director of Community Development could sign off on it, and they could try it on the new location. So it allows them flexibility without having to, to meet the noise standards, without having to come back, because they moved the stage 20 feet.
Okay. I'd like, if you agree, Mr. Mayor, to hear from the appellant and the applicant, see how they react to this.
Sure.
Or the public first, however you want to do it.
Well, what I would like to do is, before we allow the public, because they may feel differently, if they understand that the applicants and the appellant are satisfied, that they would speak after. So why don't we, Councilwoman Dixon, have at it with the, be kind, be kind to the appellant and then next to the applicant. So, Mr. Sullivan, if you want to address.
And these are ideas, just to clarify, and as Mr. Sullivan, we've bounced these off. They, I haven't shared these with the rest of the council until you've just now seen it. So these are ideas, and obviously, we're still looking for input on everybody and everything before anything happens.
Well, our association likes this idea for a couple of reasons.
Need to go a little closer to the mic.
Our association likes this idea for a couple of reasons. Our biggest fear was the opening up of all those doors. It would be 64% of the entire wall aimed in our direction. So we would hear not just the outdoor diners, but we would all, but we were much more afraid of hearing the bar patrons inside. This solves that for us, so we like this. I was also concerned that many families, especially families with little kids and bike trailers, would not find it safe to go to the 200 and 300 block of Marine. By leaving 25-foot of bike rack space where it is now, those people who usually have to take alleys just to get here, because they don't want to go on Marine, we like that part of it, too. If the sound, if the speakers and the sound are facing north, towards the commercial area, we're happy with that, too. Unless there's anything else, I like this idea. Somebody mentioned the need for an awning or something on Park Avenue. Luckily for them, Park Avenue is on the north side of the building, so the sun almost never hits that. So those diners wouldn't be, you know, sitting in the sun baking or squinting. So I like this idea. If it pans out as you described, I'll be, I'll be, I'll sign off on it.
May I ask him a couple of questions? Mr. Sullivan, thank you, and I certainly appreciate all the work you and your neighbors have done to come forward here and try to work out something together. Could you just clarify some of your earlier concerns on hours of operation, and delivery trucks, and that type of thing? Would you comment on that?
You know, we don't want to go over that, because if we reach an agreement here, we're not going to complain about. They have been violating their use permit as 3:00 and 4:00 a.m. deliveries, and we were quite upset about that. But that's, that's in the past. We're looking to the future. Deliveries, you know, 6:00 a.m.
Please be respectful.
After 6:00 a.m., that's fine with us. Because most of us get up at 6:00 a.m. to go to school and go to work.
And the hours of operation?
Well, at one time, we were concerned that 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. was too loud for the opening of the outdoor dining. You know, I might prefer 8:00, but there's not that much outdoor dining on our side anymore. So, if it's quiet, I would take, I would even take 7:00. That's okay.
And the number of musicians? Four?
I don't care about the number of musicians, because I think they've demonstrated that they're aware of the problem that we've been suffering with for four years, and they've, they say they're going to take some steps. I'm going to take their word for that. If the speakers face north and away from our houses, I'll be happy with that.
And they remove the percussion and the bass?
The bass is what got into our houses. I mean, it penetrates everything. So if the bass is controlled, we're probably going to be all right.
All right. Want to hear from the?
Thank you.
The applicant?
Yeah, is applicant satisfied with the proposal Mr. Pieter submitted? Or would you have any comments or requests?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I would like to comment on a couple of things. First of all, the way in which it's envisioned that the outdoor seating would wrap around from Park, the dimension on Park is going to be narrow enough that we need to take some access from the restaurant from Marine side. So we would need some sort of an opening there. Doesn't have to be the whole wall, but we would need some sort of an opening, because otherwise, the area is so narrow that you couldn't, you'd have to literally go out on the sidewalk. You couldn't get there from here, so to speak. So there would need to be some form of opening, you know, further away from the residents, but up there in the area that Councilwoman Pieter is recommending that there be some dining on Marine Avenue. So we would need some form of opening. So that would be my first comment. The second is that, with regard to the operations, I just want to comment, if you could bring back up that floor plan, staff, or Councilwoman Pieter, there is a, the floor plan that shows the interior operations. If you'll note, on the Park Avenue side, the dimension between the bar and the wall is a very narrow one. And so, operationally, it's much easier for us to orient the outdoor dining from the space that faces out onto Marine. That's why we originally anticipated that would make more sense. So we've got a very narrow area there that you're going to add the outdoor seating. So operationally, it's not as efficient. If that is the judgment of the council, then we would try to make it work, particularly if we're giving some, given some sort of a door on Marine to be able to access from the interior of the restaurant. The other thing I would like to say is that, after we went into all the research on where the bike corrals could go, and working with Public Works, and agreeing to the $12,000, that on the one hand, given the survey that we've done on the usage, and, I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan, I disagree a little bit, on the way in which the bike racks are used by children and others, we would really welcome the opportunity to move the bike racks away and improve the outward appearance of the restaurant itself. So, but, it's at the pleasure of the council, we'd be willing to consider whatever it is you favor, but it would be our preference that we continue to pay the $12,000 to relocate all the racks, and that the fallback, or the less preferred alternative, would be to keep half of them.
Okay. Just, speaking specifically to that, I think it would look nicer without bike racks and with bushes or outdoor. Do you care about the bike racks?
I wouldn't want to give up the bike racks. Now, you've only been in...
Well, hold on, just be respectful, please. We'll find out why. Go ahead.
I've been there for 38 years, and so I've seen this routine, especially in the summer. Now, a lot of us haven't seen it in the summer. But during the summer, that bike rack is full, and now it's only going to be half. But what it's full of mostly is, you know, those parents who go out, you know, two parents and two kids, and the kids are in a trailer behind the bike. Or the kids are on a small bike, and they like to get off on that area. They like to mount and dismount their bikes right there, because it's the safest spot on the island to do it. It's at the end of a one-way street, a quiet one-way street, because the only way you can get to it is by going to an alley. At the end of the street is a stop sign. At the end of the street is also a wide indentation towards the bike racks. Four or five people can get off their bike or on their bike right in that indentation, without having to be in traffic. So that's why it's so safe, and that's why I want at least that half of it. Those bike racks aren't that ugly.
Okay.
They're necessary, they're not going to be any uglier than putting them in front of, in front of somebody's business down on the 200 block, who's not going to like it either.
Okay. Ms. Webb, we are sharing telepathic ways right now. Tell me what your thoughts are.
Real quick, and I can appreciate the aesthetic appeal of the bike racks. From a usability side, it'd be nice to have distributed bike racks. We, as staff, favor some down by the Village Inn. Just a correction, that is public property, it's not the Village Inn property, so the bikes are within the right-of-way. Now, if we want to upgrade the bike racks to something more decorative, and they do make decorative bike racks, that would be fine, but I think we should keep some down there. We also know the bike corrals are... We also know the bike corrals are, our staff is looking at them now. There is some sight distance issues. I'd be concerned that we couldn't get 44 of all the number in there. So distribution would be good to keep some down there, which Mr. Piattar offered.
All right.
Can I address the other point that...
The door point?
The door, yes.
Okay.
As you know, our main fear was bar noise coming towards us. So if there is a door necessary there, we would hope that it would be as far north as possible, and rather than a wide accordion door, a Dutch door, because then that would get rid of half of the sound. People could still feel connected, and servers could still open the Dutch door and serve the few people on the Marine Avenue side for the outdoor dining.
Does he?
Mr. Mayor, I would comment two things. Thank you. First of all, I think that we can do better sound attenuation with a full door than we would with a Dutch door, and you can better sound attenuate through that. And we're willing to make it as far north as possible, subject to perhaps the review and approval of the director once, you know, we move forward. But the other thing I did want to mention is that on Park Avenue, there is a slight slope into the restaurant. It may not be as much as it is out on Marine, but there will be a slight grade change, and we are going to need to accommodate that in the approval of a waiver. And the door at the, at the north end is really sort of a critical part of our being able to make this operation work.
That's agreeable.
Well, Dutch doors can be attenuated, sound attenuated. You just close the top half. So when you say you want...
Mr. Mayor, a quick question on the door. If the door's there and it's opened and closed only for access, it doesn't remain open, then you don't care if it's a Dutch door, as long as it's a good quality door.
I just don't want to be...
You just don't want it always, always open.
Too wide.
So if you're only looking at it for access and you open and close it only for servers going in and out, you don't have a problem with that, right?
Well, it's just that, you know, from a service standpoint, if the server's got a tray like this and has got to open the door and then close the door and go out there and open the door again, it's just efficiently, you know, a little less desirable.
I hear you on that one. I just don't want it to be one of those great big wide doors, because that's what we were trying to escape.
Okay.
Maybe 36 inches.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I think we're all through with that exchange. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Staff, before we open up to the public for comment, essentially, if we were to make a vote, for the most part reflecting Mr. Piattar's recommendation and Councilwoman Dixon's input, with the compromise that we've reached, essentially, almost 199 percent, except for a couple of details, would that be enough going forward? And then doors, decorative bike racks, et cetera, that could be dealt with at a later date?
Yes, we have some language we can present to the council to ensure that you know what changes are being amended for the resolution. So what we've heard so far, yes, you could take action tonight and we could proceed.
Okay. Thank you. So before I open up to public comments, I would like to thank you for your patience. It looks like there is a compromise that's going to be reached between the two parties. So if you, I see a lot of signs out there. I see that you are in support of Village Inn. If you feel a burning desire to speak, you really think it's going to sway us, I don't think we need more sway, I think we have a deal, please come speak, and we know some of you are going to. If not, and on both sides of the party, anyone from Marine Avenue as well, then we will bring it back to council for a vote. I see one, sir, if you have desire to speak, please come forward and state your name.
On Park Avenue, back of that map, is it going to go all the way down to the alley? I would just...
Yeah, Mr. Piattar.
I think from a physical standpoint, because they've got a fireplace down there at the alley, and then they have that other exit door, the public dining is going to start from that second door towards Marine. And so that first 18 feet or 15 feet, or whatever that is, would probably remain without any public dining or open doors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Mr. Abrams.
Thank you. I'm Don Abrams. I want to commend Councilman Piattar for coming up with this compromise idea, which I think is a great improvement over the plan. And I was going to talk about how my home is fairly near this, but I think this is, this is a good solution. The only thing I'm really concerned with right now is the bike corrals, moving them in front of my office. We have a red zone in front of our office, and on the other side is St. John Vianney Church. This area is so congested, and senior citizens are trying to get across that crosswalk every day, and cars are whizzing through there and putting an obstruction in that red zone instead of having an open area on both sides of the streets. I think it's a big safety hazard. So I would discourage you from putting the bike corrals in that busy spot.
Since there's only half as many, they won't need to put quite so many, and they'll have options as far as where to put them. And I'd say, call Dave Webb and give him your input.
Yeah. I know, I know. Again, thank you, thank you for your consideration. I think you did a great job.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? All right, please state your name for the record.
My name's Jay Truex. Excuse me. What happened to Jeff? He's my neighbor. Anyway, I've been here about 22 years. I'm a musician, architect, blah, blah, blah. And the bike racks, I did a lot of the surveying for that on behalf of the VI, and a lot of people don't want bike racks or bike corrals in front of their offices, et cetera, et cetera. There's some side streets, you know, Balboa and even Park, that have some green zones, some one-hour parking elements that are adjacent to like the electric cart areas that might be, that way people could actually come up the alleys and park in the bike racks rather than riding down Marine. So that's my...
Thank you. I think that'll be...
You want Dave Webb's phone number?
And then furthermore, you know, the openings at the VI on the east side are all existing, and they're all single-pane glass, and basically, sound goes out through that glass. I've done probably 60 recording studios. And there's no, it just goes there, and it's basically facing the fire station. It's not facing the neighborhood. And this whole, I know, I appreciate your creativity on trying to get this thing wrapped around the north side, but it's really going to be hard to serve people out there. It's going to be tough. I mean, this is only a four-foot element we're talking about. So there's only vertical access. There's no horizontal access. So...
Skinny servers.
No, but we still have to have ADA, too. We have to have the accessibility. So you have to be able to roll a wheelchair into...
Well, you've got comparable facilities out on Park now.
And they just mentioned that there is a level change on the north side. I mean, those ramps are not necessarily ADA compliant.
That's why you get paid the big bucks to do the architecture for them.
I don't get paid much at all, actually. I'm semi-retired.
Am I done?
Yeah, you're done.
Okay. You know what? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Jim Mosher.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I wanted to correct what I thought was a kind of a misimpression created by the staff report, that the planning commission, that this is an appeal from a decision from the planning commission, that they had looked at all of this and approved all of this. They approved the idea for outdoor dining, provided that the city council, you, were going to waive all of these policies that we have. And there is a difference between outdoor dining and dining on a public sidewalk. And they did not know what your attitude would be towards that, and apparently you're accepting that, but I don't really think that that's a good trend in our city. The policy up until now was very clear that if you were going to allow dining on a public sidewalk, it was going to be a temporary situation because the restaurant doesn't use the public sidewalk all the time. And starting last year at the intersection of PCH and MacArthur and Carnation, the city allowed the permanent installation of these barriers, the purpose for which is so that you can serve alcohol in those areas, causes those public sidewalks to be forever lost to the public, even when the restaurant is not using them. And it's contrary to what the original idea of the policy was, and like I said, I don't think that's a good trend. But if you're going forward with it, I think it's important for the public to know how much annual compensation the applicant is going to pay to the city for the permanent use and privatization of the public property. I have not heard that number stated here tonight. I also wanted to mention, in the planning commission's view, although they did not know your attitude towards that or how much compensation would be wanted, they did feel in return for using the public sidewalk, they were hoping to see enhanced landscaping, and the enhanced landscaping was largely going to go in the area that is now going to be devoted to outdoor dining. So I'm wondering if the council is still proposing that, and in connection with that, you seem to be adopting a resolution that is not well or clearly laid out at the moment. And I wanted to point out that that's a little problematic. Our city charter used to require that the ordinances and resolutions had to be read in full unless you waived them at the beginning of the meeting. You still waive the meeting, reading of ordinances, but the idea was a resolution, at least there was something that could be read so the public knew what you were approving. And I think you should really be bringing this back at a future meeting with all the details so the public can see what the resolution is, and not just adopting some vague thing and letting the city staff fill in the blanks based on different people's impressions of what your direction to them has been. Those are my comments. Thank you. Oh, and the bike racks, I agree with the other speakers. I have, on fairly frequent occasions, bicycled myself on Balboa Island and going through the alleys. It's the safe way to go. So you want bike racks at a place where you can get to them from the alleys, and the proposed alternative locations on Marine are not that kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Come on down, Jack.
May I speak before you, Jack? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I just had two requests, and thank you for working so frivolously on this, and I think we're getting to a place. Two last requests. You know, there were some additional conditions placed around percussion and brass that ultimately, I feel, and even Mr. Sullivan admitted, that things had been honed in. I like the flexibility to continue to utilize that as a component of our live entertainment, acknowledging that if we continue to operate within the current, I guess, the current satisfactory levels, that we would be able to maintain that. The second part is, and it literally is looking at one day effective for New Year's Eve, we'd like to remain open until 1:00 a.m. without asking for the special permit every year to request that, considering the additional expense we're taking on to move the patio over to Park. I'd like, I'd like that to be considered as well.
Thank you. No, no, hold on, let's wrap this up. Yep, go ahead, Jack.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. Number one, I'd like to, I'm Jack Callahan from Balboa Island. I'd like to compliment the staff on what I thought was a very accurate report on the entire process that's gone through the planning commission and here. It was very informative, but very accurate, and some of the problems we've had the past few months is the accuracy of some of the information given to you hasn't always been the best quality. So I am in support of the expansion of the Village Inn. I think the compromise is good, although I can, I see some concerns for some of those adjustments that have been recommended. So, but I also think we have a lot of people here, as you know, who are in support of this, that want to raise their cards. You know that we have a lot of people that want to support this. We want to work with the neighbors. We want this thing to be equitable, because the most important thing for the island is to keep a very viable business. The island has faced some challenges the last few years. We've lost some good merchants, people have been there for many, many years. We don't want to lose any more bike racks. We want to keep more bike racks. I don't think they all need to be down by the Village Inn. We need them all over Marine Avenue. In reference to Don, I think, maybe not in front of his office, but more bike racks, and let's work this compromise out. Thank you.
Yes, please state your name.
Hey, City Council, my name is Yari Appelroth, and I would like to address two issues. Number one, obviously, the noise level, and number two, the bicycle racks. I've lived in Newport Beach for about 40 years, a little over. I have visited the Village Inn the entire time that I've lived here, and I can tell you that this is the quietest the Village Inn has ever been. Okay? If you remember, in the 80s, we had a nice little pool table in the corner. Everybody was smoking and the windows were open. So that was much, much more louder than it ever, as it is today. Number two, I've never seen the Village Inn more of a family restaurant, more children than I do today since Mr. Miller has owned that property. Also, it looks very nice, okay? And I also believe that the beautification of Marine Avenue would look very, very nice with a little bit of outside dining. I think we all agreed that in Southern California with the weather, we all love to dine outside, okay? And also, you know, why would you want to limit somebody from being able to make a little bit more revenue? Mr. Miller has a couple of children, he's got to put through college, and it'd be nice if he could generate a little bit of revenue if we're talking about children and bicycles. So I would like to have you approve that. Number two, I'm talking about the bicycle racks. I was here at the other meeting, and they indicated that it would take four to six months to move the bicycle rack. With all due respect, if it takes four to six months to move a bicycle rack, don't you think that you're a little bit overboard on all your rules and regulations? I mean, think about it, just common sense, you know what I mean? Just common sense. Six months to move a bicycle rack? I have a couple of my friends, we could move it tomorrow if you'd like, just tell me where to put it. And so, you know, it's, it's just very frustrating for, I think, a lot of people, especially for me when I hear this stuff, and everything is just so extremely difficult, you know? It's just, everything is so tough and tough and tough. I think Mr. Miller and his associates, I think they put a beautiful plan together, absolutely beautiful. And with all due respect, those dual-pane windows are 10 times quieter than the windows that are there now. And with all due respect to the gentleman who talked a minute ago, it is a restaurant. It is not a sports bar. If you take a look at the square footage of the bar versus the restaurant, I would guess that bar is probably 20 percent of that restaurant. So why don't we call it a family restaurant instead of a sports bar? And I would appreciate it if you'd approve that extension. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Any more comments from the public? All right, Brett.
To state for the record, my name is Brenton Ronald Ogden III. I am born and raised in Newport Beach my entire life. But what I am curious of is for the plans presented by the city for the north side on Park Avenue, will those two doors be removed to accommodate those, that dining, or will one be removed or are both going to stay in the same place?
Thank you. Ms. Piattar, you want to answer that?
I'll take a shot at that. Yeah, the two existing doors, both the main entry door and the one over by the alley, would remain. They might replace them with newer doors, but they would remain. And the, they would add additional doors, I think, is the plan, where all of the windows are in between there. So there's three good-sized windows, and they would be replaced with the new doors that would have gone on Marine Avenue otherwise.
And the entertainment stage is still located by the fireplace?
Correct.
So then the existing door that is still double-pane would be on the left of it and a new door to the right of it, thus opening up more of a noise level to Park and Marine?
Well, there's no, they're not allowed to have any of the doors open while entertainment's going on.
But what about during restaurant hours? Wouldn't that open up a third option to allow more noise to seep from the restaurant itself?
Right. When they, there's no entertainment, they can have the doors open till nine or 10, depending on the night.
And then also on the north side, given the fact that the doors would remain, that will also restrict the amount of seating than what the current plan has proposed, because you wouldn't be able to put a table in front of the door.
Correct. Well, he wouldn't be able to put in front of the exit doors, but in front of their access doors, that's where he would put the tables.
And then also with the door that still exists by the other fireplace, that also goes into an alley. So if the noise somehow is able to seep out and bounce off into an alley, that might make it louder, wouldn't it?
Again, they're not allowed to have the entertainment and have the doors open at the same time.
But I'm also saying, just with when sports are playing like on TV...
Just briefly, it's public comment, it's not public question and answer.
Sorry about that.
That feels like wearing a few good men. I'm enjoying it, but we've got to move on.
I understand. But with that being said, the history of the island has always had this as kind of a beer garden, and I'm going to point that out, a beer garden which is outside since 1934, when the Hershey family originally came from Germany and Switzerland. I have with me a couple of historical artifacts ranging from the 40s and 50s stating to the effect that... the effect that there is grog to be served, there is entertainment to be served. So it's always been an establishment that has been for the public, so it has a lot of clout with us. But with the current aspect of how we look at the redevelopment of our area with the inclusion of a new downtown Balboa Village sign, we're looking to improve our image. And I think with Marine being as iconic as it is, being one of the top 10 actual merchant streets voted in America, this, being on Park, you don't really get to observe Marine Avenue. You're looking across at Coldwell Banker, you're looking across at, what, another residence house? While at least on this aspect, on Marine, you get to look down the actual Marine Avenue, see the bay, and also see the fire station. So it's a lot more pleasing for a diner, in my experience, to have that aspect of my dining experience, instead of looking across 20 feet to another building. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please hold the applause. There'll be signed autographs later. Evening.
And I shall be brief.
Please state your name for the record. Please state your name.
My name is Crossan, Tommy Crossan. I live on Balboa Island. I've lived there since 1954. And it's, you're right, it's a family VI. It's not a dive bar, it's not a sports bar. A family restaurant, and it's had its ups and downs over the years. But this man, Mr. Miller, has made it a class place to go. It's not high class, it's just a classy place to come. Enjoy, enjoy the atmosphere, the ambiance, and good food. And he's done a lot for the community already. I don't know whether anybody's went to this, what, the parade? The parade, when we had the parade, Balboa Island Parade? And he put on a, he was on the street, he put a whole tent up with a wine bar. It was wonderful. People came from all over. Anyhow, enough, I should, to be brief. Okay it. Just okay it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, bring it back to council. I see Mayor Protem Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Contrary to the previous speaker, previous to Tom, I kind of like the idea that it would enhance the overall look of the restaurant as you approach it, to go to the ferry from the bridge, and people that would be, you know, looking outwards. I dare to say, if you can see the bay from that location, then you're a better person than I. But I, it just seems like a much more natural expansion to the building, and I look forward to seeing some drawings, some elevations of what that really would look like. And I applaud Mr. Councilman Piotta for his idea, but I kind of think, when we had lunch there, maybe I brought that up a little bit, but...
Oh, you're just a critic.
But no, I know, I do say that architects are far smarter than I. But I just wanted to support that compromise, and I hope that when the drawings all are finished, that everyone likes it, and we can move forward with that. Thank you.
Mayor Duffield, you can't invent everything. Yeah, just the electric boat, you have to settle on that. Mr. Piotta.
Sure, we'll give Duffy credit. A couple questions, or maybe these are questions to Mr. Miller. We've got a good point that Mr. Moser brought up. If we're going to add that door on the north side, I would love to take that corner and convert it to landscaping, so that you have enhanced landscaping along, right at the very corner. You know, it might be five feet from each corner, and it would, but you would not any longer be able to walk on the outside. There would be no fence to keep it inside, but you'd end up with, in effect, a 10-foot planter on that corner, which I think would enhance your diners and everybody else, too. And there's no seats in that area, so it's basically a walking area. Is that something you'd be agreeable to?
At this time, Councilman, I think part of that agreement is that we were willing to compromise some of the visibility of not being on Marine Avenue, and respectful to the option that you put together about wrapping that corner and allowing the opportunity for patrons, or tourists, or even locals coming down the street to recognize us. At this time, I don't know that I would be interested in that. We will continue to look for ways to make and beautify the front space, but I don't know that that was a component that I was interested in doing.
Again, you've got an access that we're talking about that Mr. Sullivan has said would be okay, which we didn't think would be possible. And so, in effect, you'd be putting plants where your access is, because you've got another access point. You know, it's only a walkway at that point. You're not going to be able to put tables at the very corner.
I think it's an important aspect of ensuring that we maximize our operation and the service that's there. I think that Mr. Sullivan is offering his compromise to this as well, not contingent on any other components that we need to offer. So I feel very comfortable with what we've come to meet at this time.
Okay, and just as a point of clarification, this doesn't keep you from changing out those crappy old windows along Marine and putting a high-quality window in. You just can't put a door in in place.
I would love to continue to work on this, absolutely. And we certainly committed to the...
You understand what I'm saying. Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. And I've got a question for staff. Right now, the deliveries are still proposed to be prohibited before 8:00 a.m. for him, and yet a lot of the other deliveries come at 7:00, the airplanes start taking off at 7:00, and Mr. Sullivan said, you know, 7:00 is okay. Is there any problem with changing the delivery date time and making it a little bit more friendly to 7:00 o'clock instead of 8:00 o'clock?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. And I'm happy to walk through the actual conditions of approval with the council if they desire.
Actually, Kim Brent has all the changes, and maybe we should put them up on the screen.
Yeah. While she does that, Councilwoman Dixon.
I just want to compliment a number of people here. My colleague, Mr. Piotta, congratulations for bringing these forces together. Compliment the applicant, Mr. Miller, and your team, and the residents, and Mr. Sullivan for having the courage and the fortitude to represent the residents. A small block of residents compared to the entire island is always going to be in a minority-type position, but you, I believe, were effective in advocating the quality of life issues that are important to our community, and I certainly appreciate that, and I commend all parties. So I look forward to seeing what the final plans would look like. Mr. Mayor, do you envision these coming back to look, for us to look at, with the final conditions and such, so we really know what we've approved or will be approving tonight?
Well, what I would like to do is give staff enough to move forward with a couple items, like, for example, bike racks and perhaps the exact door that's put on the north end. Just a consent calendar item, receive and file, to make sure that if there's any strong opposition, the public can speak against it. Otherwise, I think you have enough, from what I gather on your prior statement, to move forward. If that's not the case, let me know now.
That sounds appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Avery.
This memorandum, was this agreed upon originally or lately about the composition of the musical instruments in terms of the bass? Is that...
Sorry, Councilman.
The number three of the memorandum, do you have that?
I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah. So it just looked to me like we had an agreement, and I guess we didn't, about the instruments, and I'm basically concerned about instruments other than what was listed in number three, the piano, woodwind, string instruments, and other instruments the committee director determines. And the idea of that, I believe, was to eliminate drum sets, bass sets, from the, what would be allowed. But then you came forward and said you'd like that added back in, is that correct?
Councilman, I think this was brought in as a component to the compromise.
I see.
And after hearing what we had heard regarding some positive feedback about how things had been going, I'd like to retain the flexibility, as I currently do in my CUP, to utilize whatever instruments we feel necessary to drive a nice crowd into the space, ultimately acknowledging that we've got to meet all of our noise ordinance, and obviously, at this point, some of the conditions set out amongst our neighbors.
Right. I guess I'm fine with it as long as the other side is okay with it.
Yes, Mr. Sullivan, would you like to briefly state your opinion on the request by Councilman Avery?
I have no objection to that. Our objection has always been to the music that penetrated our house.
Okay.
Great. And it was not just the drums, but most bands have synthesizers imitate drums, and you cannot believe how they can penetrate walls and get right into my kids' bedrooms. So if I don't hear the bass drums or synthesized bass inside my house, I'm all right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's terrific. I'm really pleased with the, it looks like we got the compromise worked out, thanks largely to Councilman Piotta. And the only other comment I want to make is just the extraordinary effort here by the council. I know all of us have been down there. I drove down there today. I went down and had a meal with Julie the week before, and I know most of us, all of us did. And the staff has just been, there's a lot of hours. I can't think, maybe this is common in other communities, but it's been a huge effort on everyone's part, and it's just great to see. This is, you know, to me, we're really close here, so hopefully we get there tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we entertain a motion, staff, did you want, I know there was a request to put the item on the screen. Is there anything you want to review briefly before we make a motion?
Mayor Muldoon, we could run through the modifications that have been presented this evening and get clarification on your direction. There have been a lot of different ideas discussed this evening, and we want to make sure that we're all understanding. So, Brenda, did you want to run through them?
Yeah, let me go ahead and do that for you. So starting with condition number two, the memo that was circulated to you today identifies you want to amend that to reference the fact that the live entertainment and the existing use permit from 2009 will maintain and be in place. And then going on to condition number eight, it's also a recommendation from staff, just for clarification, to indicate that the live entertainment and condition number eight relates to the sound. This is more just clarification that's stated in your memo. But on to the conditions that have been modified by tonight, by Councilmember Piotta. I believe that condition number 15, as shown here, reflects the discussion tonight, so no changes in that area.
Yeah, I don't see any changes. 14 would be deleted, and 15 would be, it's a modification of the existing 15 to basically change the school nights.
And indicating... Correct. Oh, if one more thing, and the applicant did ask for New Year's Eve to go till 1:00 a.m., so that would be a modification to this condition if the council were amenable to that.
Thank you.
So going on to condition number 16, just clarifying that the glass door, which provides access to the outdoor dining area, and the door and window on the south side of the building would be updated to be sound attenuated. The outdoor seating area shall not be permanently enclosed, and this was also mentioned by Councilmember Piotta, not allowing them to have those plastic shields that generates a kind of appearance of it being closed. And this goes on to the issue that was just discussed by Councilmember Avery, and it sounds as though we came to a compromise where we could modify this to allow more flexibility in the types of instruments. So is my understanding that percussions and brass may be permitted?
Oh, this is the code, yes.
Okay. Going on to televisions, the concern was that we don't want this to be a sports bar that be prohibited from being viewed from the right away. Or clarification in the relocation of the bike racks, modification as to the amount that would be committed to relocating the bike racks. It also has a timing as to when those would be in place. The bottom ones here, the first one, the stage should be located per the plans unless agreed upon with the director. This makes a lot of sense and provides flexibility as to if we want to relocate that in the future, so this seems to be appropriate. The sound curtain at the south end shall be closed during entertainment. The next condition, exterior dining should be located along Park Avenue. The curb on Park should be located north to allow three feet to public dining area and six public sidewalk. The actual design to be built per public standards and Director's, Public Works Director's approval. Post-bifles be located along Park Avenue only. Now, the applicant has asked here to allow some access on Marine, so we would modify this to indicate that the door could be on Marine. And public dining on Marine shall be four feet in width at the existing sidewalk level as allowed per ADA. And this, I think I need some clarification. You said the width should be four feet at the existing sidewalk level. So are you indicating that we would not permit to have the outdoor dining area raised? We allow a door? Or we'd want it to be permitted to be level with interior?
You're talking about Marine?
Correct.
It would be level with the public sidewalk rather than the finished floor inside?
If we allow a door on, from the northernmost portion on Marine, so that it could be accessed from the interior, wouldn't we want to raise the outdoor dining area to be flush with the interior of the restaurant? So we...
I mean, you're allowed a step, but whether or not an immediate step at the threshold is compliant with accessibility standards or not, I don't know.
One of the concerns in this discussion we've had even earlier is, there's a lot of difference in grade in this area. In this particular case, it might be a tripping hazard if we don't allow for it to be level with the interior grade. And it's sound also from the applicant's discussion earlier about some flexibility to ensure that they are allowed to have as much seating as possible. So I know earlier some of the discussion was specific as to which doors would remain, where the accordion doors would occur, where seating would occur, where landscaping would occur, but perhaps it would be more adv- advotations to everyone if we have some flexibility, because there might be a reason that they might want to close off one of the doors, or perhaps relocate the landscaping to someplace else. So based upon that, I would seek to have some flexibility, and that a condition would not be specific as to some of the comments that were being made earlier.
I don't have a problem with allowing the flexibility to raise it to whatever they need to from an ADA standpoint.
Okay. So the last condition here, we would probably modify to indicate they could raise it to comply with ADA. Access may be permitted on Park, may be permitted on Marine Avenue to the outdoor seating area.
The farther, the farthermost, the farthest northernmost location on Marine.
And maybe put in a three-foot door. Not any larger.
So it was discussed that we would, the city attorney suggested we might want to bring back the resolution since there are so many changes for, on consent calendar at your next meeting for the sign-off.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. There's more than I realized.
Okay.
Yes.
And there's one more.
Okay.
In terms of the hours of delivery, that's in the original use permit condition of seven, number 17, so we would bring that back as well, showing that deliveries could occur starting at 7:00 a.m., if that's council's direction.
Yeah. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to try to make this simple. I'm just going to make a motion to incorporate everything we just covered in the staff summary to be brought back as a consent calendar item with, if you're able to, staff is free to talk to council members individually. And if it's, if need be, we will have another hearing, hopefully a much shorter one. So I will move the item as amended by staff at this time.
Second, now, is that actually a consent calendar item when it comes back, or would that be another public hearing?
So the public hearing is now, you've closed the public hearing, so that portion of it is done, so you can go ahead and just bring it back on consent.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question on the deliveries? Can we require that those deliveries occur from the Park Avenue side? Is that where the trucks are parked?
They park in Park Avenue.
Okay, all right.
And one just caveat, we just want to make sure we don't violate the Brown Act by talking to council members, informing some type of consensus. So we'll probably just bring it back at the next meeting.
Thank you. All right, there's a motion, a second. Is there any other input from council? All right, seeing none, let's vote.
With Councilmember Hurdman recusing himself, the motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Thank you. This time, are there any motions to reconsider? Actually, no, let me wait for Councilman Hurdman to return for this motion.
Hopefully it wasn't.
Any motions to reconsider from council? Seeing none, we are adjourned.